The end of our summer schedule. Moving forward in October, we will be meeting twice a month on the first and third Wednesday, and this begins six months of council meetings in the dark. Mr. Metcalf, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Westford, I'm present. Ms. Rickards.
Here.
Ms. Pananopoulos.
Here.
Mr. McGreevy.
Here.
Mr. Tedlin-Moffin.
Present.
Mayor Andrea Deutsch.
Here.
President Aaron Mitter.
Here.
Mr. Westford, could you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the great object for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited and just as for all.
Thank you very much. I have no specific comments, Ms. Mayor.
I do, thank you very much. Hello, everybody. We have a full house here today, so I just have a couple of announcements. Number one, school is back in session. It's September. Everyone's back home, kids are back in school. If you see a school bus and its lights are on and its stop sign is out, stop. Let the kids out, let the kids disembark safely, get to where they need to go, make sure the lights are off before you go again. Failure to abide by the school regulations will result in a big ticket, so it's for everybody's safety. Second announcement, I love dogs, everybody loves dogs, who doesn't love dogs? I would like you to abide by the laws and keep your dogs on a leash, and please pick up after your pets. It's just a courtesy and it's also the law. And please keep our town clean and nice and keep everyone from walking in death, and it's a good thing to do. Next announcement, there is a gun return program that's going on this weekend from Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00. If you find that you have a firearm in your home that you do not wish to have any longer, and there's many reasons why somebody might choose to do so, Lower Marion Township Police will take it back this weekend from 9:00 to 1:00. You won't get paid for it, but you will be able to safely dispose of it, and they will take care of it. So I just wanted to let folks know there's an opportunity to get it out and get it out into safe hands. We have a couple, oh, we have a couple fun things happening this weekend. We have the Music Fest is happening, the Sunday, the 22nd, so come on down and be with your friends and neighbors and enjoy your time. There's also a sidewalk sale this weekend, so come get some bargains and support Shop Local and support your local stores. It's a great time in the borough, it's a fun time to the borough, so come on down and enjoy yourself. Next, we have a couple anniversaries that I'd like to acknowledge in the borough. As mayor, I'm in charge of the police department, and we have a couple officers celebrating anniversaries, and we'd like to make a couple of special acknowledgements. Officer Dan Dutton has completed his one-year probationary period with the borough, and he has served us super well, very well, and we are incredibly proud to have you, Dan, and we welcome you as a Class C officer, in the full-time Class C officer, and I think the borough of Norbert is very lucky to have Officer Dutton serving this community, and I'd like to thank him. In about nine years, Dan Dutton will catch up to our next officer, who is Officer Michael Vernaccio. And Mike has been a very special part of Norbert for now 10 years, which is a wonderful milestone in the borough. Mike has been a crowd favorite, doing his job always with a smile, professionally, and just, we are very fortunate to have such a wonderful guy serving this borough. And I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge Michael, and Chief Gallagher would like to say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for this time to honor a great officer. I'd like to introduce Mike's family. Mike's family, his wife Kim is here, his son Frankie, his son Michael, and his daughter Elena, his mother and father, Mr. and Mrs. Michael Vernaccio, his brother-in-law and sister-in-law, Mike and Michelle, as well as his brother Dave, it runs in the family. Dave serves over in Haverford, and we're pleased, we're so honored to have all of you here tonight in honor of Mike. Mike has been serving the borough of Norbert, the residents, the business owners, all those who live, work, and play in Norbert for 10 years, since August 31st, 2009, and he just marked a 10-year anniversary. The one thing I'd like to make note about is, you know, the borough, or any township or any jurisdiction, will always make an investment, whether it's infrastructure, resources, things that need to be done in the community, in your jurisdiction. There's no more important investment than you can make than that personnel, human capital, and the return on investment that you've gotten from Officer Vernaccio for the past 10 years, and even though I've only been here for a year and a half of it, has just been tremendous. He is an outstanding officer who does a great job. Mike is one of those steadfast officers who comes to the borough, he's always calm, cool, and collected, he treats others like he would want members of his own family treated, and the service industry kind of runs in their blood. For instance, his wife Kim is a nurse, and this is what Mike does, this is what his family does. His brother Dave is a police officer. So they have a certain pride, a certain dedication to public service, and the borough has benefited from that for the past 10 years in Officer Michael Vernaccio. And the one thing I'd like to say about Mike is that I have found a lot of common ground with Mike in the past year and a half. Mike is always the go-to guy. If I ask Mike about something, I ask him advice, or I ask for a recommendation, or anything that he's seen in the past 10 years in terms of experience to help us move our department forward and standardize it, Mike seems to have some great answers. And in addition to that, all the officers that we currently have are outstanding officers. The borough benefits tremendously from what I have seen for the past year and a half. And before I turn things back over to the mayor, I'd like to personally thank Mike for all of his service for 10 years here in Norbert Borough. If I could get a round of applause for his behavior. And this next part is for Michael, Frankie, and Elena. I'm gonna let you know that you come from good stuff. My wife had pulled over at the car on Monday, September 16th at approximately 7:05, which in hindsight was not the best location to stand with our hazards blinking, an officer lit us up blue and red. He was on the shorter side, he had a longer mane. For some reason, I thought it was close to Ekinloft, but I could be way off. I have no family in any kind of public service. My family is blue collar and hardworking. If I'm being honest, I have a very strong phobia of police officers of my own doing. I spent a few unpleasant months in county jail in New Jersey, just to let you know, this was written by Officer Matt Belfi. I have realized that the phobia is irrelevant if I just follow the law and do the next right thing. This being said, I promise you, this phobia, though caused by my own actions, is very real in the way I feel when being approached by an officer. I had out-of-state license plates, so this officer knew that I wasn't local. I'm a recovering drug addict, I still haven't gotten my teeth fixed, and I was basically wearing rags for clothes because I thought, I threw some clothes on to run out to get a letter notarized. I know I'm being long-winded, but I'm doing this intentionally because I don't believe I can express my gratitude enough for the nonjudgmental approach that this officer had. I don't think he would have treated the pope any differently. So I'm writing this letter in a time when your officers arguably have the toughest job on the planet with all these accusations and social justice warriors scolding police, the same police that protect my two daughters and wife while they slept and I work overnight. It was approximately two minutes that this officer left such an amazing impression on myself and my wife. This is not about getting a ticket, we're not getting a ticket for any reason. This is about saying thank you for what you do every day, and a special thank you to the officer who changed my whole outlook on police. Absolutely outstanding. Please respond back with anything at all. I just want to know, let you know how much this two minutes has changed my attitude. Chief, you have an amazing officer in this gentleman. Kids, that is your father. I'd like to turn things back over to the mayor for a special presentation for Officer Michael Vernaccio.
Michael, come on down.
Here.
Mike, in honor of all you have done for this borough, and in honor of how proud we are of you, and how thankful we are for your service, we give you this plaque to tell you as a token of our appreciation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you want to take a picture with your family.
Get the family.
Don't hesitate.
Well, we can go fast.
Come on in. Come on in, guys.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. Yeah. Is it on? I don't. You just, like, turn it, like, no, I'll get it, I'll get it for you. And then you just hit anywhere on the screen with the surf. Okay, there we go. Hit the screen.
Can you also do one this way?
Anybody else? Okay.
One more.
Frankie, come here, one more button.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. [applause]
We appreciate your time, thank you.
Mike, hold on, look here, guys. Sorry.
Thank you.
I know that one is really good.
We'll take a moment while we.
Watch this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, absolutely.
Thank you, too.
Thank you. That's exactly like your mom. Well, this is my mom. Yes. It looks exactly like your mom, which is the second awkward thing I've just made up of. Stop talking to this family. I didn't pay her number. Don't leave, there's just many more awkward things. The night's just started.
Well, that is a lovely way to start a meeting. We have a lot to be proud of here. Anything else from your report, Ms. Mayor?
That's it, thank you.
All right. Let's move to 5A, Committee, Finance.
I'll hop in here. Okay, we just met, so I'm gonna apologize that my internet is sort of... Sean, do you want to start with the budget update? I wrote down those dates.
You can do that, the borough's manager's request.
Okay, so, that's mine. Okay, information I didn't just discuss, in the CIP conversation we had last meeting, I had a question about $62,000, two line items to the St. Line property. I had asked how those two lines had been put onto the CIB plan, and at that time, Sean could not remember how they got on, I followed up the next day. Jim Nixon on July 18th sent me an email requesting $52,000 for the parking lot and $10,000 for St. Line Park. We had a discussion about do we want to revisit the redistribution of those funds, given the fact that that did go against what we had talked about with the ADA or safety related, and there were some other pressing issues in the borough. And FNA does recommend that, a little conversation about that.
Would you like to put that under new business?
Sure.
Anything else?
Yeah. FNA's been talking about MOUs, and I'm gonna apologize, that's really not the right language. It's really what we're talking about, policy and user agreements about borough properties and scheduling. Tonight, Mr. Walco walked around just to get an idea of that space and refresh his memory. So in the next few months, we should have drafted some policies for the council to review and talk about. And really, the aim is just understanding, really, is borough property. Barbara Fortnoy tackled this, Michelle tackled this, and now collectively we can take a look at how our boroughs use that space.
Okay, great.
The ISLET, Rob, do you want to give an update on that?
Oh, yeah, the borough is moving ahead with the carbon emissions inventory through the pilot of the State Department of Environmental Protection. So my thanks to the staff, we're working with an intern from Temple and with the support of the EAC.
Okay. Next, we talked about citizens' requests for resolutions. Council may remember, I think in June, we received an email from Greg Pininos requesting that council adopt the Medicare for All resolution. And he and I have been going back and forth about just how do we bring a resolution to the table? How do citizens bring a resolution into consideration at the table? And I've given him suggestions of in the past. For example, the environmental resolution came out of lots of citizen advocacy and public speaking, they came to talk at meetings, the EAC in 2050 got involved. So what FNA is recommending, that as part of the comm plan and the webpage, that we really put together, how do citizens impact council? How do you have an issue brought before council? And somewhat, Barbara Fortnoy, we believe, NCA, in our civic association, is actually working on something. She's updating what our...
Team president, I was gonna say. Does that sound familiar to you?
Yes, Barbara, I have an email, so.
Oh, well, this is perfect. So I would, again, we just suggested that perhaps within the larger comm plan, one of the things that we're talking about, and you will hear about next month when Sean presents the comm plan, is citizenship as a verb, and how do you become an active citizen? And individual council people should not be giving advice on how to get a resolution to the council table, rather...
Put on a guide, a guide. That would be helpful, that's a good idea.
So that's what FNA is recommending. As far as the trash ordinance and the contract, it is a recommendation of FNA that we need more time. We did talk to the office about this, and said that a doable process is that Matt gets a bid out in January, and then in February, each committee can review. So FNA will take a look, Info will take a look, Public Safety will take a look. And early 2020, it's not exactly the time we talked about, the bid's going out like now.
Right, for January adoption.
Selected, right, I mean, we have to pick some, probably in December, right?
For the January one start.
I think we were asking if committees would visit this in the interim, right? Not in February, but would visit this with an eye to being able to give Matt some of their thoughts in February and everything.
For, okay.
Every time.
Okay.
So he could just pick that up after the contract is done. And that we not rush it in the moment.
Okay.
But then each committee will take a look at it.
A careful look.
Like, in these few months that we have. Okay. Additionally, we have some appointments. There is an EAC open seat, if you remember. The EAC has a really specific need for some PR, public relations work, so FNA would like council to consider having an open call for that seat. But has the EAC committee do the interviewing and then recommend an appointment? Council obviously has the authority to appoint, but because it is so specialized, that perhaps they are the better group to do that.
Okay. I have a bullet here under new business to discuss open positions, so maybe we can get into detail that.
Okay. The UCC Board of Appeals, we're gonna ask that we hold off on those. There's one application in the queue, but two are coming per semester, so we'd ask that we hold off on those appointments this evening. I also wanted clarification, we had a deadline, there was a deadline posted for council seat positions of September 11th, and we received one on September 16th. I asked if that was a firm deadline, is that something that we need to open up? What is our policy with council appointment? And deadline, Sean said that was kind of an arbitrary deadline set by the office.
So I have that for a discussion coming up as well.
And lastly, we discussed conflict of interest policies. This is something that Michelle is going to be tackling. Michelle, maybe I can speak to this.
Okay, well, just, I mean, and I already reached out to Erin about this, and we have an internal set of, it's a manual rules for council.
House rules.
House rules. There are a number of things that probably need to be updated that haven't been visited since 2011.
Correct.
And we thought that with our RAR meeting coming up in January, that would be an ideal time to maybe, you know, have a draft ready for adoption. There's a number of updates, committee structures change, a number of things have changed, and I think, Erin, we advise administration maybe I'll work with you, and with Sean, and with John. And then, one thing we'd like to weave in there, maybe just, you know, taking a look at a slightly broader set of, it wouldn't be rules, right? Because you can serve on council as long as you, there are state rules about conflicts of interest, that's what governs. But that, as a body, we can have a set of guidelines or things that we would sort of aspire to, that might be a slightly more expanded version of ways to, you know, ways that council members might want to check certain things that could potentially be read as conflicts, even if they're not legal conflicts. So we talked about possibly visiting some issues like that, and seeing if that would belong in our...
It's an opportunity maybe to bring them to people's attention as they like, and the community choose to run, become interested, so that we can avoid sort of falling into a sticky trap.
Exactly.
It's a small town.
And then just a last update, the communications plan will be delivered next month. The office just requested some more time to present it, and I think probably the first for the next meeting is the time to do that. This is a big meeting tonight, so, I think that's good timing. That's all we have on the night.
All right, Infrastructure?
Infrastructure, I'm gonna keep this report very brief, because we have a big agenda tonight, just to say that the Infrastructure Committee met on August 23rd. At that meeting, we discussed the St. Line Avenue property and the RFP that's currently, I guess, kind of in an outline form. We discussed several topics, and I'm preparing a one-page summary of that discussion that I'll share with the committee on the 27th, our next meeting, to make sure that we've got those particular points, you know, that we're all in agreement about, those items, and then we can share them with the council and see if everyone agrees with those particular items. The Infrastructure Committee, in the interim, since the 23rd of August, the Infrastructure Committee also received several proposals from the Shade Tree Commission around an idea they have to amend with Shade Tree ordinance, an idea about...
When properties...
An idea about checking properties during the transfer period and making sure that they, the properties are up to date with the Shade Tree ordinance. That can be tree planting at the time of the sale of properties. There's a discussion we'll have about the request of waiver for curb requirements when a tree is involved, and one of...
Involved in Shade Tree planning.
Shade Tree being involved, yeah, and the fifth, the third topic is the idea that the Shade Tree Commission would like to be involved in some way with development proposal reviews, to make sure that they're in alignment with the Shade Tree standards. So the Infrastructure Committee will look at that whole sort of batch of issues at our meeting on the 27th, will confer with the solicitor and our borough manager around those, and we'll get back to the workshop. We also got a, we also received a very amazing, interesting, amazing because I found it interesting, informative summary of the work that the new Environmental Advisory Council's been doing over the past few months, and I would encourage everyone who's interested, especially council members, to read this, because it provides a really nice overview about, you know, what our role as a borough is in relationship to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, our municipal separate storm sewer system, which is the MS4 application, and our pollution reduction plan. There is several elements to how these applications evolve, and borough staff has been working on ours for years, and I think this Environmental Advisory Council summarized it really beautifully and sort of is queuing up the public participation in the future. So this is really good news for the borough, I think. I have nothing more, unless the members, the other members in the structure have something to add. You good?
Public safety.
Thank you. Public safety met on the second Tuesday, no, Wednesday, at 8:00 in the morning in this building, and we too had a discussion about budgeting for each category, fire department, police department, as well as emergency management. We asked for some numbers to be presented at the next, our next meeting, maybe something to go down a little bit, and Sean mentioned that we may be spending a little bit more on emergency management, because some of those requirements have changed, and to dig a little bit deeper on where we are, like, with the police department funding and those kinds of things. We also had a discussion regarding the very specific information the new parking program is able to give council, and of course, the office, and of course, the police in the parking monitor. We did have, we heard from Matt West, who did us a great favor in presenting a lot of information about what streets, what time, where, when, who's compliant, how many tickets go a little bit over the deadline to be paid, those kinds of things. It's very interesting to see that, and Matt brought up that while it hasn't really slowed down the ticketing, we are able to get a lot more information, and there was a suggestion, and we haven't discussed it any further perhaps in October, of changing the ticket price, so the parking ticket price, which is currently a 50.
And that's been since, I think, 2007 or 2008?
Yes, that's right. That's right. So, and that's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, that will conclude committee reports. We'll move to Agenda Item 6, which is interviews for council candidates. I'd like to lay out a process and then one matter of discussion for council before we begin interviewing. So we're gonna ask each applicant to come to sit in the front seat here. We're gonna ask the other applicants to leave the room. Now, this remains a public meeting, all members of the public can stay. We're gonna ask politely that the applicants just respect the process and sort of not watch the live feed here on Facebook, so that each person has an opportunity to answer questions to council members sort of cold and evenly. We will figure out exactly how much time each person will have, an initial opening statement, and then any council members who have questions, it's not necessary for every council member to ask a question to each person, the amount of time will be somewhere between 10 and 15 minutes, so it's going to move quickly. Following that, we will have a public comment period, and then we will move on to our action items. The first action item is a motion to appoint a member to council. So we have an opportunity to have an open discussion prior to that motion to appoint, to give everyone an opportunity to speak without putting any names on the table, people can state their thoughts, feelings, dreams, hopes, et cetera, and then we will transition to take a motion. The matter before us for discussion, we have four candidates who applied, and they met the deadline, which was published by the office of September 11th, which, right? And we had one applicant who applied early Monday morning, and so I would like to get a sense of whether we should consider that application and interview that candidate as well. Does anyone have any thoughts?
I'm gonna ask Mr. Walco to maybe refresh us on the ideas of the state codes as, or the rules regarding this matter. All right, so if we said it was 30 days, I don't know, is what I'm saying, like, if it's 30 days, right? We accepted Jim's, we said it, we're at the next meeting, I guess, what I would have said.
Well, that's a little different than the application process.
Right.
I mean, for purposes of this process, you could just throw a name out today, and if you voted on it, it could be that person. The application process is something that you as council set up, that you asked to have happen. It's really not a legal question, it's just more of a, what do you want to see happen than the gentleman's agreement that is the council? So it's nothing that would exclude them from under law. Nor does someone need to apply to be appointed. Correct. It's a separate matter, but it's interesting.
I see no harm in interviewing somebody who's expressed interest in council, I really, I think it's to our benefit regardless. I think it's always, always great that people are stepping up regardless of whether they meet the deadline, and I'd like to, you know, I think by interviewing them, we bring them more into the process, even if they don't join council this time around. It's helpful, so.
Any other thoughts?
You go, Rob.
Sort of open.
Yeah, I had thought we should stick to deadline originally, but then with our discussion in the meeting and FNA, just realizing it was a deadline set by the office, just for kind of administrative purposes, I'm more open to interviewing.
Yeah, I think that we should stick to the deadline, because I think there's some question of transparency if we accept applications after the stated deadline. I did not realize that was an arbitrary kind of deadline from the office to get the package letter. I just think, as in moving forward, that we should be clear, if we set a deadline and we call it a deadline, then it should in fact be a deadline, because it puts us in a position, in a small town, of having folks come forward and there being some questions about that. So in the future then, I think that, again, we should not use the word deadline if in fact it's not on.
Well, that's, I could... I'm not hearing an overwhelming sense that we should not accept this application, so I think I'll make the decision... Well, thanks. I could. I'm not hearing an overwhelming sense that we should not accept this application, so I think I'll make the decision that we do. That gives us five candidates. I'm going to go with 12 minutes so that we can get this, get this moving here. And Mr. Antar, as you are alphabetically first, I will place you first. So if you would come up here, Mr. Gallagher, Mr. Bush, Ms. Bon Ferrell.
Where do you want me?
Oh, Mr. Winston.
Where do you want me?
Right there, yes, sir. Thank you. All right, Mike Walco.
Thank you.
If you could just tell us your name, where you live, how long you've lived in the borough, your history here and any other opening remarks. Thank you.
My name is Mike Antar. I live at 101 Conway, across the street. My wife and I, our three little kids have lived here for four years. Been part of the fire department for four years. I joined a month after I moved here. I was from Penn Valley originally, grew up there, graduated from Harrington, went to a couple of different states after that, New York, La Calle, lived in Georgia, Florida. Found my way back here after meeting my wife in New York, so convinced her that this area was a great place to live. So here we are. We moved here to this, to this town right when our second child was born. She's four. We now have a one-year-old also and a five-year-old who just lost his first tooth tonight. Been pretty involved with the fire department, pretty involved with just being local here in town, into all businesses, miss, miss Franklin's pretty, pretty well. But Norwood was a big part of my youth growing up. Do remember a lot of the old businesses that are no longer here, but there are a lot of new businesses that are, that are great for us. Love the playground, love our sense of community. We decided that as expensive as it is to live in Norwood, it's worth it because the moment we moved in, we met many families that have children the same age, who are now friends and go to school together, play together in each other's houses, at the playground. We all watch each other's children. I was just a part of the community that I feel like you don't find in a lot of, a lot of places. Then there's our neighbors. We have a great street. Conway's a great street. Everybody, we send our two older ones, five and a four-year-old, they'll run down the block to a friend's house, about four houses down, after learning how to look for cars coming out of driveways. But they are, we're comfortable with them doing that here. So we want to have a place for them to continue to grow and to, you know, plant the roots, our roots as a family. So so far, so good and feel like another way to contribute would be to be a part of an organization that makes a difference and decisions for our community.
Thank you. I'll go around in any order.
Mike, what do you think if you were named to the position, give me a sense of what you think needs to be tackled first. What would be the first thing you'd want to do?
I think we need another hair salon. I think we should go right on.
Another?
Another hair salon. No, I think, I think safety in town. I think one of the, I drive through town at maybe 12 miles an hour at the most and I feel like I'm flying. When our son was, when we first moved here, our son was one of those kids that, you know, got away from us and ran between cars and we pulled him back and there's cars coming flying through town and it's a, you know, it being a cut through and a very convenient one for outsiders to cut through from Marion area to Winwood, I'm okay with it if we can find a way to make things like that safer. I'm okay with, you know, I'd love to have it be like where I grew up, it was a little quieter, but you can go walk on the street and not worry about your, your safety as a pedestrian or you're riding a bicycle or just outside playing, play to the street, play ball and everything because that's where we had our fun.
Thank you. You answer, you answer. Thank you.
Any other questions? Rob?
So first of all, I went to Lower Mary and you went to Harrington, so I wouldn't hold that against you, but.
I did have some friends in Lower Mary.
We have three, the council's organized into three committees. So we have public safety, we have finance administration and we have infrastructure. So could you imagine one of those realms where you'd want to pitch in?
I would say being, being a part of the fire department and having young children here that I would like to have be safe all the time, I think public safety would be where I would gravitate towards. Infrastructure would probably be second, with finance a very distant third.
I also went to Lower Mary in high school, so probably, we'd probably balance the council to have someone from Harrington.
Yeah, that's true.
But I found it really interesting what you said about safety in town because I completely agree with you. It seems like five miles per hour would be, it'd be nice if that could be the legal speed or maybe 15 max, but unfortunately the council doesn't really have any say-so of how the speed limits are set.
Of course.
We are, we have been looking for years at different ways of creating traffic on and completing the streets in a way that encourages or discourages fast driving and makes it safer for pedestrians and bicyclists and people with strollers, wheel vehicles. Of the solutions that have kind of been on the table in the borough, what kinds of decisions do you think you would want to participate in? Like what kind of solutions would you choose or prioritize for completing the streets?
I think that certain sections of certain streets would be designated as no parking, not entire streets, not entire blocks, but just like in front of the firehouse, there's a, can't park between certain signs because when we turn out, we need to be able to turn out. Iona is a very, is a very, very busy cut-through street. I know that one of our council members lives there and I, I use that street all the time and it, it's amazing how, because there's cars parked on both sides the whole way, there are, people get, like people get very impatient and can't figure out how to just let one or two cars go, then you go and something, you know, take turns in a way. Goes back to school days.
What a novel concept.
And you know, you can't, I do honestly feel like people drive better in their own neighborhoods than they do in other people's neighborhoods. I've been guilty of that also. We're more conscious and, you know, we know there's a lot of children in our community. I walk with my, my daughter in the stroller, the one-year-old, every day and there's sometimes, we have to cut into the street because there's no room between the, on the sidewalk between utility pole and a person's fence or wall. But I think some parts of some streets, we can figure out if they can, they can be designated a 20-yard stretch of no, no parking here, no parking there because that could give us a better, a better flow on some of the busier streets. And I just came back from a department drill, it was a driver drill and I drove almost outside. Works tight. That's where I wanted to practice because it's, it's, it is super tight with, with a truck. You definitely can't get two cars and their cars parked down both sides. So I think that could help. I think that would definitely help with, with flow and also the impatience of drivers and that could naturally slow people down if they are, they can become less impatient.
Mike, how do you see the affordability of Norwood?
Terrible. We love it, but it's, we, we're in a, we're in a twin home. We have three kids in a, in a, you know, in a twin home that's, three bedrooms and, you know, we, we'd love to move to a bigger house, but what's happening here is there's houses that are, there's the house on the corner of Windsor and Conway that's going for mid 400 a square foot. $675,000 for a 1500 square foot house. Somebody bought it for $400,000. They whitewashed it. They did some good staging on the inside. They built a fence and they raised the price by almost $300,000. There's, the affordability is terrible when, when people are paying, you know, when people are being convinced to pay this, that they're convinced it's worth it. We have to make sure that we, I mean, we can do things in our community that, we want outsiders to want to live here. We also want our residents to be able to afford their homes that they have. So we can, we've, we've thought about the flow that we had once about, you know, selling the house and move to wherever, almost anywhere else because the price per square foot would be dropped by half. But if we can figure out a way to make it more affordable, that would be, that would be fantastic. And I think, I don't know sure if it has to do with the builders that are coming in, the flippers, you know, but I'm not sure if there, if there can be anything though, but we can use that.
Any other questions? We've got about 30 seconds left.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Actually, I was. Aaron.
No, no. Yes, you can stick around until after we vote, so outside for a while. Sure.
It was so good. She's like shaking the bag. You're not okay.
We're going to keep a tight clock here, so thank you. All right, Holly, welcome. I'm in the hot seat there. So if you could just state your name, your address, your history in the borough and maybe any opening thoughts and then we'll ask some questions.
Certainly. I'm Holly Bon Ferrell. I live at 116 Conway Avenue. We have been in Norwood about six and a half years. I'm deeply honored to be interviewing for this position on borough council. We love this community and I would really love to serve the community in a council capacity. For the last few years, I have been helping out the human relations commission that the borough started, so we're working to move that forward. I have helped out updating the emergency management code here in the borough, which is a very interesting process and one that I think we've made some good strides on. I've also been serving on the Democratic Committee of Lower Mary in Norwood, helping out with that work. By day, I'm a school psychologist in Haverford Township. I have a ninth grader at Harrington and a seventh grader at Welsh Valley.
All right, thank you. Council members, questions? Ms. Ricketts?
I'm going to give you the question to ask. Holly, how do you see ways that the council can appropriately support our downtown businesses? How do you see us brokering that relationship?
I think certainly that partnership is an incredibly important partnership for the borough. I think a lot of it starts probably with communication, which I think is already a healthy relationship, understanding what the downtown businesses need, understanding the role council can play in supporting that and then really seeing, you know, what steps can council take in the borough to help increase the occupancy of our business districts sustain it.
I have one.
Go ahead, Rob.
The borough, hi Holly, thank you for being here. The borough is home to many not-for-profit organizations that I think many of us consider really essential to life in Norwood and life would not be the same without many of them. These include the Food Bank, Fire Department, the Public Library, Athletic Association, Fourth of July Committee, Montgomery Early Learning Center, New Horizons, just naming a few. There's the, there's the community, there are other organizations. How, and I'm really asking you this not to put you on the spot, but to ask you kind of a puzzler that I think all of us have to think about. How, how do you differentiate between those organizations that are services that we as taxpayers should support and subsidize and those that should be supporting themselves?
Do you mean in terms of budget? Like how do you determine?
Yeah, in terms of, in terms of our budgeting puzzle, yeah.
I think some of it you should probably put back to the community. I mean, it seems like, you know, if council's representing our community, like perhaps we need community input on that to say just what you asked, like which organizations do you think are most deserving of our, I mean, if it's community tax dollars, then perhaps I would say one, maybe that's a place to start. I guess two, you could look at overall impact to the community. I mean, they all are very important organizations, but, you know, does the fire company contribute more to the overall good of the community than, I don't know, any one of those numerous organizations you listed? So I think you could look at it that way. Certainly it's a puzzle. I think you're right. And a really hard choice because with so many great organizations, how do you say who doesn't deserve funding? That would be a very hard thing to do. Also, I suppose you could look at who has access to funding resources elsewhere. Perhaps some organizations might have more ability to raise funds other ways, to access other kinds of funding resources. So you could perhaps prioritize those that don't have as much access to other funds over those who do.
Rob, I'm sorry, Michelle and then Rob.
I have a, I have a question about 201 Seabine Avenue, which you're probably familiar with. I've heard it very little of you, just in case anybody forgets that it's about a three and a half year property.
It's so big.
Yeah, it's pretty big. And so our borough manager once referred to the decision, in fact, twice referred to the decision we have to make about the future of that property as quote existential. I agree. So I have a question about that I'm going to ask everybody. And the first part of the question isn't to put you on the spot, but I just want to get a sense of your understanding of where the borough is now, our current situation and your sort of assessment of the status quo. And then the second part, I guess is kind of a thought, a thought experiment. If you could be in charge of this decision-making process, how would you make a decision about Seabine? What information would you want to gather? How would you want to gather it? What kind of timeframe would you want to see this decision-making process happen in?
Sure. So I guess to answer the first part of your question, like current understanding of the state of Seabine Avenue is that it is a borough-owned property that is currently rented out to a variety of commercial tenants, that, you know, there's perhaps some deferred maintenance to the building that might need to be dealt with, that is a large resource obviously for the borough, also, you know, an expensive resource for the borough and one that we know perhaps we could be using differently slash better slash more efficiently. So I'd say that's my current understanding, but may or may not be entirely correct, but that's what I think right now. And then in terms of if I was in charge of this process, like how would I make that decision about what to do with it? I would say one is a starting place. Like I wouldn't want to be solely in charge of that. I would definitely want to access like a wide committee to work on that because I don't think that any one person or any one viewpoint should be in charge of deciding the fate of something that could be, as you said, existential to the future of our community. So I would think, you know, drawing together a really good team and it probably involves community organization, involves community members, it involves council, it involves borough staff, it involves, you know, current tenants and really just seeing, you know, what are everyone's goals? I would think we would want to collect a lot of data, something I do in my job. So I think we want to collect a lot of data from people about what do people want, what are our priorities, what's important, what current uses are really valued, what current uses are underutilized or people don't even know that's there, you know, things like that. And then in terms of timeline, that's sort of hard to say.
It might be not a fair question, but I just wanted to, I'm going to ask everybody. So if it's unfair, we'll know by the end of it. That was a totally unfair question.
No, I would say as quickly as is reasonably possible to get all those things done. I wouldn't want to rush into any decision for something that key to our borough. So, but we also don't want it too slowly because obviously if it's a pressing issue, we need to deal with the pressing issue. So some sort of balance of not too quick and not too slow, which is a non.
No, no, no. And thank you. I know this is, this is a challenging question and I'm not asking you, I just, I wanted to give you a chance to sort of talk about something really specific because sometimes the questions can be really general. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other, yes, Rob?
Okay, so is there, is there a policy area that you'd be especially interested in working on? Say, we have our three committees, infrastructure, finance, administration or public safety. Could you see yourself in?
There is not one in particular I could see myself in. I would be happy to serve on any of them. I think the strongest skillset I would bring to a role on council that I use in my job every day.
But there's a lot, you know, you've seen, you know, the YouTube channel and all that stuff, that you know that there's a lot in front of us, some months, some months not. Sometimes we're waiting for, as you said, data collection and to gather more information. But again, it's the same question. What do you think we should be tackling first? What's the hot issue that's in front of us? Anything come to mind?
Certainly, infrastructure is important. There's a big issue right now. The bridge is obviously an important, big issue that I know is complicated, has a lot of different factors and factors at work in it. Stormwater seems like an important pressing issue. You know, streets and that sort of project, that seems like an important pressing issue. Certainly, development, I know, is on the minds of a lot of people, whether it's council or community members. So, that's sort of the big list, but I think I'm sort of taking off some of that. Those are priorities right now.
Thank you. You answered the question.
Thank you.
So, with your list that you just gave, it's a small borough. There's limited staff, limited resources, and, you know, in many ways, we could have ten times the population and the same amount of professional staff. But we wouldn't, because we would have more income to support more special, professional staff, which we don't. So, how do we prioritize? How do we get all the things we want when we can't have them all now? What's your view on that?
Because you can never have everything, Holly wants. I was listening to the most recent council meeting, and someone, and maybe it was Sean, sometimes it's hard to tell, just talking, just listening to the audio, but was talking about, you know, paving and doing a needs assessment of paving, and essentially this statement, or something along the lines of, you know, we need to look at, because some streets, like, might look like they're in really bad shape, but actually, they're pretty functional, and, you know, not many people drive on that street. And it struck me that that's very analogous to what I do in my job every day, because I might have sixty first graders who are having a really hard time with their letter sounds, and this person can see sixteen of them right now, and this other person can help eight of them, which leaves, you know, forty-six others, and what are, how are we going to make a plan for them? And what we do at work is we triage. We say, like, what's most important right now? Like, what if we don't deal with it in the next six months is going to be an on-fire issue? What can wait six months? They're all important. Those are all important issues. You know, what do we have the money to do right now? Also, what's feasible right now in terms of our long-term plan? You know, some things, like the long-term plan, might need more time to flush out the scope of it before council can really move forward on it. Other things, council might be ready next month to say, let's move on this one, let's put some money towards this. So, I guess that would be my answers.
Thank you.
Assessing it all.
Any other questions? I have one more, which is, you're currently a Democratic Committee person. Do you have thoughts about if you were to receive the appointment, holding both roles?
Sure. Well, I would say that I have deep and utmost respect for those who hold these roles on council and give their time to do this job. I also have a fantastic amount of respect for the people who give their time to the Democratic Committee. I understand that you can do both of those roles, and I have great respect for those who do or have done both of those roles simultaneously in the past. For myself, right now, I don't think I could hold multiple roles at the same time for a variety of reasons. Obviously, first and foremost, time, like, between my family and work, and the commitment of something like council, I couldn't find the time to adequately do a job like the Democratic Committee. So, were I to be appointed, I would step down from that role. And also, I think unfortunately, from my other roles I'm currently doing in the borough, because I think that you probably need to sort of focus on one. So, that would be my thought about that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none. Thank you very much. Could you send in Mr. Bush?
I can send in Mr. Bush. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Holly. Thank you.
Mr. Bush, if you'd like to take the seat closest to us? Yes, thank you.
I think it's time.
But you can start. By just stating your name, your address, tell us a little bit about your history in the borough, anything you'd like to tell us about yourself and why you're interested in the position, and then we will ask some questions.
All right. I'm Fred Bush. I live at one oh five Fox Hall Lane. These days, I'm primarily a stay-at-home dad. I'm a former professional gambler and student of literature. Tell a little about why I moved to Narburg in the first place. I think that tells a little about why I'm here. My wife got a job at Penn. We were looking, you know, all throughout the main line, basically, for houses in the Lower Marion School District. And I had a spreadsheet. In the spreadsheet, it says, all right, how far is the house to the park? How far is it to the library? How far is it to the grocery store? You know, I had, how far is it to, you know, Town Hall? So, I had about five things. And Narburg scored a grade on everything except the school. We're on the north side, so, you know, we're bused to Lower Marion, or to Belmont Hills. But eventually, you know, once we get to high school, hopefully, we'll be able to walk to school, and we've completed the whole... The spreadsheet will be very happy. And, you know, it turned out to matter, because when we moved here, my daughter was starting kindergarten, she would go to the playground every day, walk to the playground practically every day, and, you know, spend a lot of time in the library, spend a lot of time with all the downtown stores. So, as I did all that, as I got to know Narburg, I got more involved with some of the local groups. So, I joined the rec board, you know, because there was a call for, you know, volunteers for the rec board. You know, I figured, well, I'm spending so much time here at the park, I ought to contribute to how the, you know, how the decisions are made about the park. I got involved with Narburg 2050, working on walkability issues. You know, I'm very happy to be able to walk downtown, but, you know, there's still a lot of sidewalk issues here in Narburg that make it difficult for my neighbor who has a disabled mother-in-law. She couldn't navigate the same streets that I walked down. She couldn't get to the park. So, that was one of the issues where I... I think that's the first thing where I came before council, to talk about an issue. I've since, you know, spoken out here as a representative rec board on my own, or as a member of Narburg 2050 on sustainability issues. Coming out here, I got to learn more about the senior center, so I'm now a volunteer helping set up at the senior center. So, I feel like I've, you know, as I've learned more about the borough, I'm becoming more and more interested in making sure it keeps the things that brought me here, the walkability. I didn't mention the trees. That was another big factor when we came out here. The tree camp, it was amazing. So, I'd love to see the borough, you know, routine, a lot of its green character as well.
Council members, questions? Rob?
So, your story gives us a window onto your decision-making, that you're using a spreadsheet to measure distances between potential houses. So, help us translate that into the kind of council setting, how you imagine making decisions when there's lots of information, say, on any number of decisions, how your kind of comfort with processing numbers or large amounts of data?
Well, I mean, I started out as a grad student in literature, so reading vast amounts of, you know, critical literature or, you know, primary text, just hundreds and hundreds of pages, and, you know, being ready to discuss them. And then, I moved into poker, which is a numerical field. So, I played primarily online, and I have tracking software that I have to go into and say, well, okay, you know, in this situation, it looks like if I do this, I'm losing money, so I've got to change that. So, I'm comfortable both, you know, digesting large amounts of text and working with numbers and also working under uncertainty. So, a lot of times, you're making a decision, I mean, in poker, you're making a decision, you don't have perfect information, and you're under time pressure, and you have to do something. So, it doesn't faze me. I have a lot of experience doing that.
That's what I've gotten for you. And really, not, this is not about putting you on the spot, it's really about hearing how you might think this through. The borough's home for many not-for-profit and community organizations that may get a really special place to live. You volunteer for one of them, New Horizons. One of our earlier applicants is a volunteer for the fire company. We have the library, we have the Narburg Community Food Bank, the Narburg Athletic Association, the Fourth of July Committee, Montgomery County Early Learning Center. Just, and those are just a few. How would you think through, given that there's, like, these organizations serve a broad demographic, like, old people, young people, people in between, how would you differentiate between the services that we as taxpayers should subsidize and those that should be supporting themselves? How do you start to pull that apart?
I mean, I think one of the most valuable services we can provide to a lot of organizations is meeting space. I mean, the borough has a lot of meeting spaces that are not particularly... You know, there are some where there's an established relationship with one group, and they are tightly linked to a space, like New Horizons is here now, or, you know, I mean, the MLC rents this space. But I mean, I'm thinking about sort of non-rental spaces. We have a lot of spaces that we could fairly easily open up to more groups and make the process easier for having groups meet there. I think it's difficult to navigate that process right now, but you're asking where the divide is between service and that the community should provide. I think we should make it easy for these groups to function, is the answer. I think we should do our best to facilitate them, but we should not be... I mean, I don't think we should be funding these groups. There's a thousand things that we could be doing as a borough. Right now, I would find it hard to pick a winner. You know, I think that we should be doing what we can to let these groups have space to work, if possible, providing, you know, providing those opportunities to use borough-owned property. But I don't know enough about the funding situation to give a full answer, but my instinct is that we should not be directly funding outside groups.
Good questions. Michelle?
I have a very, very specific question, because I know sometimes the questions can be really general. So, I know you're familiar with two oh one Sabine Avenue. It's a three and a half, roughly three and a half acre parcel the borough owns. Our borough manager has referred to the decisions that we have to make about the future of this process, the property as existential for the borough. So, I first wanted to just get a read of your understanding of the borough's current position, situation with respect to the property and your sort of assessment generally of the status quo. And then, I'd like to sort of have a thought experiment where you can tell us, if you could be leading this decision-making process, how would you want the borough to make the decisions about Sabine Avenue? What information do you think that we need to gather? How would you want to gather it? And what sort of timeframe would you want to operate in? What sort of urgency level do you think that this decision-making process should occupy more?
Well, rec board has talked about this. We have the head of the Sabine Park Concerns, Friends of Sabine Park, is a member of rec board. We've worked on a report for council about, you know, our vision of the long-term park, green space, and long-term parks use. Right now, we've got one corner of Sabine that is a park, that is a public park. You've got the main campus of the former Narburg Elementary that is being rented out. It's owned by the borough, but it's being rented out to a variety of different spaces, including some run by people here, formerly run by people here. So, you guys know more about this than I do, but my understanding is that the physical plant is deteriorating. There are a lot of very expensive repairs that need to be made if it's going to be, continue to serve its current users. There is the parking lot outside. I know you're discussing there right now what to do about it. So, the decision in my mind to be made is whether or not this building should continue to keep its current use, or whether the whole space should be reimagined. Right now, the park is tucked away. It's not really a very useful park. I mean, it doesn't have running water, it doesn't have electricity. It's kind of an awkward location for a park, but it's a really big space. If you include the whole campus, that is the biggest parcel in, you know, biggest sort of available parcel for development in the area that I know of. So, the borough has a huge opportunity here. I mean, this is a space that could be used for a major development, or it could be used for a large park, some athletic fields. Our recommendation in rec board was a community center. But what really needs to happen is we need to reach out to various community groups. So, obviously, the friends of Sabine Park are, and the neighbors in that area are people who need to be consulted in any big change that takes place. I think that the borough needs to, needs to be clear what the finances would be, what the financial hit would be to the borough. Right now, there's a significant rental income coming in from the property, and I know the borough kind of counts on that. So, we need to figure out what, you know, could the borough financially withstand, you know, taking this out of circulation for a while? What would happen? And we need to seek outside funding partners. If we're going to look at developing this as a park, which I would love to see, then there'd need to be some nonprofit, there'd need to be somebody else helping out here. I don't think the borough has the resources to fully develop this on its own. I would hope that there would be some nonprofits that could assist in that. But, you know, that's amazing. So, renovating is a relatively minor project. I mean, it's expensive, but it doesn't require a huge amount of community input. But if the borough decides to do something else with the space other than keep the status quo, then it really needs to be a big process. I mean, there'd be other voices like the Sabine Park, and I'd say potential other users of the space, so probably the Athletic Association, and I'm not sure if we have a parents' club. I don't know. Some of the, some of the parents' groups could talk about, you know, how they would use the space, and it'd be good people to talk about and talk to. Thank you.
I'm sorry, we are just out of time. So, thank you, Mr. Bush. If you could wait outside and send in Mr. Gallagher.
Hello.
Welcome to the hot seat.
Right here?
Yep, right up front. If you could take a moment and just tell us your name, your address, your history in the borough, a little about yourself, your interest in running, and then we'll ask some questions.
Got it. Got it. Brendan Gallagher. I live over at five oh two Woodside, around the corner of Woodside and Rockland. I've lived here pretty much my whole life. I, you know, I'm here to contribute to the best that I can for the future prosperity of this borough, while trying to honor its heritage of this amazing place, which I think is a really healthy tension. And I think we need to remember that when we're making decisions. So, I mean, when I, the lens I bring to this, to this piece, to this situation is essentially threefold. It's as a husband, a father, and a son. I have two kids back here, twelve and ten, Alan and Henry. So, obviously, open space and the ability to have children thrive and live like I did back in the day is important to me. I also have a mom and a dad who live over by Narburg, so they don't plan on going anywhere soon. So, aging place is also super important for me. So, the, and of course, my wife, my lovely wife, Jen. I don't think there's a kid in this neighborhood who she hasn't fed with snacks at some point or another, or played on the stage that she's built in our backyard for music nights. The second lens I'd bring is as an executive. I am the chief connected health officer of a company called Digitas Health in Philadelphia. Been there fifteen years. It's about five hundred people. It's the largest agency in Philadelphia. And we work on big, complicated, complex problems, of which there are no real absolutes. There are no rights and wrongs that need to be solved through collaboration and commitment and insights and research, and ultimately, decision-making. So, I think that level of decisiveness and collaboration I would bring as a lens to my perspective as well. And then, the third lens that I would bring is as a citizen of Narburg. My entire life, I grew up here with four little brothers, worked the American Family for four years. I'm still the fastest person on the register, faster than Gina, she'll tell you. Spent all the money I made there at the movie theater, where I was in the Cub Scouts, Mrs. Baker. I've lived, I'm in the fifth house in Narburg right now, three on the north side, two on the south side. So, I have equal love for both sides. We're not building that wall anymore, making the south side pay for it. And so, I bring that level of perspective of just an absolute love of this borough, a history that goes back to when my great-grandfather moved here in the early twentieth century. My grandparents got married at St. Margaret's in nineteen forty-four. My parents got married here. So, that... a history that goes back to when my great-grandfather moved here in the early 20th century. My, my grandparents got married, St. Margaret's, in 1944, my parents got married here. So that love of this town, and I, and I hope to be able to watch my kids grow up here too, is what I would bring. So, you know, I welcome the, the chance to help steer that change.
All right, thank you. Questions? Gigi?
Thank you. Brendan, because my glasses are not. It's kind of, okay. So you're working for this big company, as you said, there's 500 people, and you get a lot of data, a lot of information, and you're trying to problem solve. And we get that. And there are quite frequently a lot of challenges put before council. So it speaks to both how are you going to build consensus? So if you believe one thing and your, your colleagues don't, how, what's the plan of consensus? And then, of course, tell us a little bit about how that role, how consensus fits into the role of council.
So I, I mean, I don't think consensus is all that Machiavellian. I think, you know, a lot of times it's, it's creating ideas in collaboration with people so they have a sense of ownership of the idea. So that, you know, almost like participation inspires adoption in a way. And then you do your best to try and get everybody on board and along those lines, and sometimes you will. And sometimes you gotta give, and, and, you know, live to fight another day. But the best you could do is, is put as much insight and research and understanding and experience into the problem, you know, hope that others all see it the same way you do, and if not, try and guide their opinion as best as you can. But, you know, you can't, can't make the horse drink. You can only bring a little water.
Thank you.
Good question.
Sure. Brendan, council identified four goals, five goals in 2019. What would you say should be the top priority of council right now?
So I'm assuming we're talking Sabine, bridge, parking. I knew I was going to fail the last two.
What do you think your comment? No, it's not a test. What are your top priorities?
I would say the, the top priority is, is solving the bridge. I mean, it's, it is, you know, as a kid, I remember when, you know, the Rockland Avenue Bridge went out, I was going to a kindergarten in Marion at the time. The change it makes to a community when that throughway isn't working right is significant. You know, and I'm not just talking one way versus the other, it's just that those are collision points for people to, to meet. So, and I know it's incredibly complex and, you know, shared ownership and responsibilities and advocacy at a state level versus, versus a borough level, but I would put that pretty, pretty high on our list. Two, I would say Sabine is another piece that you would, we would need to really put some time into. And I'm thinking, from a revenue standpoint, it's a, it's a nice generator, but at the same time, it's an underutilized public space. And so how can we, from a green space standpoint, so how can we breathe life into that without, you know, sacrificing a lot of the other things that we need to on an agenda? So I would say the bridge is probably the biggest bias.
I have a really specific question. Sabine Avenue, follow this, and you've already, you've already sort of delved into it a little bit. So I, I put that up there so anybody who wasn't familiar with the configuration of the property would see. It's a three and a half acre parcel that we own. And our borough manager has referred to the decisions that we sort of need to collectively make, but the future of this property is existential. So I think you, you get where we are currently. I kind of just wanted to ask you, what's your assessment of the status quo? And the second part was sort of a thought experiment, which is if you were spearheading the decision-making process, how would you want to go about making the decisions about Sabine Avenue? What kind of information would you want to gather? How would you want to gather that information? And what kind of timeframe do you think the borough should be looking to operate within? And what level of urgency would you put on that?
Well, I think there's, I mean, I'm assuming the two, the two primary sides of this is one, it's a significant revenue, revenue generator for the borough now, but at the same time, its maintenance, it's not getting any younger, it's perhaps not being utilized in the, in the best way. I mean, I, I don't, I've never had any problem investing in places as long as you have a long-term vision for it. So at the end of the day, if it was a five-year plan that said, this is slowly but surely going to turn into a, a community center with a revamped park that has more specialized activities associated with it, which wouldn't necessarily clash with Narburg Park, but maybe be a secondary type space for people to gather, then we could start making decisions along the lines that would lead to that five-year vision. I, I don't know if there, there is a five-year vision yet, but to be able to get to that, the, the level of research you would want to do to get to that, I think, has been started with a little bit of that, the report that, that we have around, I forget the name of it, it's a hundred something pages.
This will be sound assessment?
Yes. Some nice insights in there.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, and then I would, I would look to maybe, you know, we're not at, at the mercy of some of the newer communities that can build things from scratch, but look at what the infrastructure changes would need to be first, then building on top of that, and then getting to the place where you ultimately had the center or the, you know, I would love to see it be like a community garden that everybody chips into every year and has like full-time fresh vegetables for the entire borough all year. But that would need a, a revenue model associated with it that was at least as much as what we're making now, if not more, off the property. But I think that, that business case would be one of the first things you would want to build. To say, okay, if it's not this now, then what is it supposed to be? And how is that going to generate revenue for the, for the borough? Does that answer your question?
Brendan, thank you so much for being here. You're, I don't think it's lost on any of us that you're a rare council applicant. You know, that, that, I've been following council since I moved back to the borough in 1997. I lived in the near, near area before that, and I've kind of been following closely and I've known most of the council members through that time. And I think your executive hat that you wear is, is, it is rare and it's unusual. I've also sat, this, this kind of occasion to appoint someone to council isn't particularly unusual. It happens. I think three of the current members here initially started as appointees.
Okay.
Okay. Three started through the elect, election process. Many really good candidates, including you, have come and done this interview, and then we never saw them again, actually. They're really good people, came and interviewed, and they, they were gone. So I'm wondering, would you be, if you're not appointed tonight, would you be willing to stay involved? Would you be willing to support us on these issues to bring all this talent and skill that you clearly have?
Yeah.
To help us, you know, pull apart these important issues around Sabine Avenue, around how we fund our nonprofit community organizations? Like, would you be available and make sure you stay involved?
Yeah.
I'm putting you on the spot.
No, 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 you're definitely not.
Are you only interested in sitting at the table? Are you really like, do you want to, can you help us with these things?
I put myself on the spot. I mean, I, I, it took me until Sunday to decide.
So you're kind of like ambivalent?
And, and well, because I didn't want to not commit. And so the decision to do it was a decision that I intend to keep, to be, to be more involved. So if I'm, if I'm chosen here tonight, you could, I'll, I'll be here. If I'm not chosen here tonight, I will stay as involved as I possibly can. But I went, I can, I can say.
You'll give us your phone number.
Yeah, you have, you have my phone number already.
He might call again.
But, I mean, in all, in all seriousness, it's been years. I mean, over the course of the last couple of years, I think I've met with a lot of you on the side and talked about, how do I get more involved? You know, I'm balancing this family and this job, and, but I still, I want to be more involved. And now my kids can almost make dinner for themselves, not quite. So I have some more free time to be able to.
They can make dinner for you.
Yeah, well, yeah, as long as you like egg and cheeses. But, but that, it has freed me up to be able to spend more time and, and commit more time with this community. And no matter what happens here today, that I plan on, you know, hopefully seeing my face more often here.
Thank you.
That's it. May I have a quick question?
Go ahead. Twenty seconds.
Okay. You've acknowledged a, a really important issue that has, it's first to acknowledge, the history of Narburg towards the future of Narburg. How, I think that's an interesting strength you have. How would you use it?
That's a great question. I mean, with great power comes great responsibility, right? That's Spider-Man. Yeah. We have five seconds. No, I think, I think just recognizing that tension.
Yeah.
And respecting it as a healthy tension is it, like, inspiring other people.
Thank you.
Yeah, good job. Thanks for that.
We don't do that anymore, remember?
I need to be tight because everyone says the same shot. No, that's all right. Could you send in Ira? Thank you.
Yep, got it.
Mr. Winston, welcome. No, Rachel, we can all see you. It's pretty and the camera can see you too.
Okay.
If you can tell, and you've been through this process before, your name, your address, your history with the borough, and your interests, and then we'll ask you some questions.
Okay, so Ira Winston, 317 Marion Avenue. I bring to this application my strong commitment to Narburg as a 30-plus-year resident, my professional background in infrastructure and information technology planning at the University of Pennsylvania, and my experience as a community volunteer. I have firsthand working knowledge of the issues the borough has faced in recent years and the current challenges and opportunities because I have attended many council meetings in recent years. I've also had numerous conversations with borough residents who worry that Narburg is being destroyed. I am almost always able to convince these folks that the destruction is not a foregone conclusion. And I usually do this by telling them some facts about the development projects that weren't apparent to them. And then by the end of the conversation, they're usually like, at least willing to admit that it's not a foregone conclusion. My work experience includes upgrading infrastructure in several older buildings while maintaining the historic integrity. The upgrades include facade repairs, window replacement, HVAC replacement, redesign for change of use, roof replacement, and data networking. I have direct experience with sustainable design. Many of our projects are LEED certified, and we pay very close attention to energy efficiency, water conservation, and the use of sustainable materials. Right now, we're considering the use of mass timber in a new building project. Mass timber replaces concrete or steel as the structural element for the building, and it has increased thermal efficiency, lower carbon footprint, and studies have shown it increases occupant well-being. If we succeed, it will be the first mass timber building in Philadelphia. During my tenure on, on the council, should I be fortunate enough to be appointed, Narburg will undergo several large construction projects, including the Narburg Avenue Bridge Replacement Project. Again, my professional experience is directly relevant in that I have overseen close to $250 million of worth of construction projects over the last 20 years. I've also been involved in volunteer leadership role at the Jewish Relief Agency for the last 11 years. We distribute supplemental food to over 3,000 families each month. I also serve as the Homeowners Association President for a 20-unit condominium building in Vender, New Jersey. In addition to the usual peacekeeping duties, I was involved in an 800,000 facade repair project for a building that was built in the early 90s. From these volunteer service experiences, I recognize the contrast from my work environment, the need for negotiating skills, patience, compromise, and acceptance of decisions that may take longer and differ from my own preferences or recommendations.
Thank you.
My position at Penn has changed in the last few years, and I am focusing on a few key projects on my way to retirement in 2024. As part of that process, I'm preparing to expand my other non-work activities, including getting more involved with Narburg. I would certainly strongly consider running for council in two years. In summary, I believe I bring complementary skills, a complementary skill set to council, and I would work very hard with you folks to make Narburg a better place.
Thank you. Rob?
Thank you, Ira, for being here. Your career is so impressive to me, especially because you can do all the things that I can't do, computer science and engineering.
Doctorate in Pascal, seriously? Pascal?
Pascal. Okay, well, that sounds years ago. I'm wondering if, from where you sit, you could think back, is there a decision that we've made over the last year or the council before I was even on it? That stands out to you as a particularly good decision or a decision that you disagreed with? Can you think of?
So, I mean, I'm really in, in favor of the spirit of the zoning changes that were made. I really am a believer that we need to get people investing in Narburg. And the changes that were made to allow people who were like at the edge of investing to invest, because we were seeing some properties getting pretty run down, and you enabled that. You know, obviously, it was a complicated situation, and not everything was done perfectly, as we've discovered in the, in the last year or so. But the spirit of that, that, of that change was great.
Okay. I have a really specific question. I've asked everybody else, so in fairness, ask you as well. I know you're familiar with Sabine Avenue because you've literally, you have an aerial view of it. It's a three and a half acre parcel that we own outright. And our borough manager has referred to the decisions that we're going to need even making about this property and this future as existential for the borough. So I wanted to get your, your read on, your understanding of the borough's current situation and your sort of assessment of the status quo. And then ask you to engage a little thought experiment, which is if you were in charge of spearheading the decision-making process, how would you want to see that process run? How, how should we make decisions about Sabine? What information would you want to gather? How would you want to gather that information? And what kind of timeframe would you want to put that decision-making process on?
Well, so, I mean, my, my basic feeling about, about Sabine is that we have to figure out a way to preserve the, the Mainline Early Learning Center in some form on that site. And we also have to have, you know, have a, a park there. Those are the two things that this community appears to be really in favor. Those two are the sort of, you know, things we cannot deviate from. How exactly we achieve that, which parts of the buildings we, we decide to save and which parts we decide to demolish, is something that I don't have enough information on to make a decision. But I would, I would expect to engage a professional to do an assessment of several plans, but with the constraints that I laid out, that, you know, Mainline, you know, Early Learning Center and some sort of park remain.
So I just want to, thank you for being here. I just wanted to sort of tag in there because my question is that the, you know, the, so Montgomery Early Learning Center is up at Sabine Avenue, and so is the Narburg Community Food Bank, and the borough also is home to many other important community organizations, including the fire department, the library, the Fourth of July Committee, others, Athletic Association. Some the borough subsidize in part. For example, New Horizons actually has space here during their operating hours, and some of the borough do not subsidize, such as Montgomery Early Learning Center or the, or the Narburg Community Food Bank, which actually pay full freight, you know, market value rent to the borough. How do you differentiate between services that the taxpayers should be supporting and subsidizing, as you've suggested we should do, you know, Montgomery, by kind of privileging Montgomery Early Learning Center in the process versus organizations that should really be supporting themselves?
Right, so I'm not, I, I didn't necessarily say that, you know, we need to subsidize them. I just said I got the sense.
Privilege them.
Well, not even necessarily, I got the sense from the community that the community really wanted them to stay in some form. The particulars of the financial arrangement between the borough and them, you know, I don't know enough about to speak to, but I would say that I'm all in favor of subsidizing these kind of activities, assuming that the borough has the kind of, you know, resources available to do that. And it should be done in an equitable manner. My comments about ELC was more of just my observing what I've heard the community members say at various meetings.
No, I value ELC as well. I think they're a really important part of the community. But also the Narburg Community Food Bank's there, and I value what they do for our, our broader community as well. It's, you know, it's, the question is, how do you differentiate between supporting organizations that serve, say, elderly people versus those that serve youth, versus those that serve underprivileged or, or, you know, hungry children? You know, and why would we, how do we even begin to think about who we support and who we privilege?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily differentiate between, because I think they're all legitimate.
At some point, we have to sit down and work on, create a budget.
Right.
So how do you, how would you, how would you do that?
Well, I, I personally, you know, my feeling is we would, I would want to work on the revenue side, figuring out ways that Narburg has more revenues through a variety of, you know, mechanisms so that we could have the, the leeway to.
Well, we're taxing, we can tax.
Well, okay, the taxing increase wasn't what.
We're into a tax increase? Just a question. I, I, we see our face at every meeting, you've been at every meeting for years. You saw us set priorities in January. What would you say your number one priority would be?
Our number one priority?
Your number one.
Priority in Narburg. We have to.
We're into a tax increase? Just a question. Ira, we see your face at every meeting. You've been at every meeting for years. You saw us set priorities in January. What would you say your number one priority would be?
Our number one priority?
Your number one.
Priority in Norbert. We have to take care of these infrastructure projects. We have to make sure that we have the funding in place for whatever our share of the bridge is and whatever our share of the sewers and the infrastructure problems that need to be resolved before we can tackle any of these other issues. Because you don't want to let the infrastructure problems get ahead of you, because then you wind up with situations where streets collapse or, you know, buildings collapse. You have to stay on top of those issues. That has to be the first priority. That's why, you know, when you guys were doing that facilities assessment project, I, you know, offered to help out and give some advice about what the, you know, how to look at that report and how to get estimates, you know, based on my experience doing that, because I think that that has to be, you know, priority number one, is making sure that there's a stable infrastructure in the community.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Should I tell them to come back in?
Yeah, everybody can come back in now. And once everyone is seated, if anyone would like to take a stretch while we refill the room. Bring the meeting back to order. Now is the moment for public comment. Anyone who would like to discuss anything on any matter, if you could, I'll call on you, stand up, state your name and address, and there is a three-minute limit, although I don't think we're going to have that many commenters.
Hi, I'm Hollis. I live in Woodland, and I was my friend in support of the Medicare-for-All resolution. Greg Paninos was going to speak to this, but he was called away. So anyway, to me, I just wanted to say thank you very much for trying to work out this process where the public can solicit resolutions for you and from you on a kind of a national level. And, you know, it seems like Norbert is already on the national map with the plastics ban and the straw ban, so this kind of thing, if you passed it, would also, I think, you know, increase your reputation as a progressive, forward-thinking borough. And we were tabling this weekend and got over 50 signatures. By far, everyone was favorable toward the Medicare-for-All Act. That's Pramila Jayapal's Act. It's 1384, the congressional act, if you're curious. So anyway, thank you very much for considering, and I do hope you find a way to allow us to request resolutions from the Borough Council. Thank you.
Any other public comments? And Mr. Ridgway?
Ed Ridgway, 155 Marion Avenue. I want to do a couple of things. I'll try not to go over three minutes. First, I just wanted to give an update. We, as you know, I've been running the Norbert Business Association for, I've been president for probably about six years. I've been helping lead it for more than 10 years now. One of the main things that we do is run events, and here we are, it's event season again. So just wanted to kind of take the opportunity to let everybody know what we have cooking. The Borough Office already knows because they've been very supportive of us, and they're supporting, you know, most or all the events I'm about to talk about in one way or another. So we've got, starting tomorrow, is the sidewalk sale, which will go from Thursday to Saturday. Sunday is the Music and Arts Festival, the one in the fall we always call the Welcome Back Music and Arts Festival, because it's, you know, the first time a lot of people have seen each other after the summer's over, the school year's started. So it's always well-attended. Typically, this one will have, you know, anywhere from 1,000 to 1,500 people at this event. And it's a, you know, it's basically a big block party that we have, you know, a free family event that we have. So everybody, everybody here knows it, and anybody who hasn't, you know, should come down to that one. In a couple of weeks, we have the Norbert Oktoberfest, which is the business association's one fundraiser every year. It raises money for, usually for two good causes, but always for the Dickens Festival, which is our expensive event that we do in December. A week after that is the Norbert Scavenger Hunt, which is a tradition that was restarted a few years back, probably six years ago maybe, was restarted, an old Norbert tradition. It is going to fall under the umbrella, the coming, scavenger hunts are going to fall under the umbrella of the business association, like the music festivals now do. So the NBA will be bringing those events in addition to the events that we already do, like the one later in the month. And the final event I want to talk about in October, which is the, which is of Norbert event, which is, anyone who has kids around here knows what that is. You know, 500 to 1,000 kids race around town and collect treats and, you know, we entertain them for a couple of hours and then give them a prize. So it's a, you know, it's a, it's a nice tradition that we have here. So those are the events that are coming up. I just wanted to take another minute to address you about the decision you're going to make tonight. You know, it's a, it's a real opportunity when council gets to decide who is going to join them at the table, you know, as opposed to the residents deciding. So I wanted to let you know my thoughts on that. As a, as a resident, I always think that I look for, I look for two things. I look for somebody who's smart enough to understand the issues that they're going to be facing and to learn the new issues that they're going to need to learn. And in addition to that, I look for somebody who's willing to do the homework, someone who's willing to do the work, to put in the hours. And I think the people who do those two things or have those two skills have been the biggest assets to the borough. And the council people who haven't had as much skill in those departments have been less successful. So as personally, that's what I look for. In my role as the leader of the business association, excuse me. I wanted to say that the, the business association is made up of so many different kinds of businesses, it's rare that they speak with one voice. There's different agendas, different priorities. Depends on what the business is. Some want more of something, and others want less of that same thing. But it's pretty unanimous right now with the, the future we're looking at in the next couple of years. It's pretty unanimous right now that the number one thing that the businesses are concerned about, from the people in this room, is that they have your support with the projects that are coming up. And that's the renovations, the construction projects, and the, and the bridge project specifically. And so I think in terms of what they're looking for, it, as a group of business people, is they've made a commitment that they want to see all or most of the businesses that start this process in the next couple of years make it through to the other side. I'm optimistic that we can help each other through this, but as a group, we're looking to the people in this room to make that happen. And so I ask you, when you're looking for the skill sets that you want to join you at this table, keep that in mind. Who can help you with these projects? Who can help you to make the big decisions, to monitor the utility companies, the railroads? Who can work at the construction companies? Who can help you to do these things? Because this one part of your constituency is really interested in that particular thing. Thanks.
Thank you. And just in case anyone's wondering, I gave Mr. Ridgway two three-minute segments, one for the business community and one for himself. Any other public comment? All right, hearing none, we will close public comment, and we will move to a discussion. Couple of comments from me to hopefully cover this discussion. It's an opportunity for council to look at its strengths and its weaknesses and try to make an appointment that balances those forces to the best interests of our community. I am very happy to serve and honored to serve on a council, I believe, where everyone here really takes those community interests to heart and puts them number one, and I think ahead of their own any kind of personal goals or ambitions. And I think we're really lucky as a community to have that. We are also very lucky that we have a wealth of intellectual resources in this community. We've been expanding our boards and commissions left and right to take advantage of that, and I think it is to the benefit of all. I also am pleased that over the years, we have made sort of a habit of having an interview process. I think that you see a resume, you get a letter, maybe you know someone, but there's always something added by sitting in the hot seat and taking questions from the other council members. And you get to see different sides of people, and it's very helpful. And I, I know that every council member comes into this with an open mind. We're going to make a decision in a few minutes. We're going to have a nice discussion. But seeing all of those sides and weighing all of those factors is what leads to that best decision for the community. So with that, I'm opening up for discussion.
I nominate Holly Von Farrell to fill the position.
Let's have a discussion.
Said it.
Let's have a discussion. I will take, I will take motions, but I see where you're, where you're going.
That's my motion.
Hold it, please. Thoughts, comments, Cindy?
So we have five amazing people that are really.
Not how it works.
I discussed this with Mr. Welkow.
You certainly can have a discussion on any, but there should be a motion on the floor.
Okay.
I made the motion to nominate Holly Von Farrell to fill the open position in Norbert Borough Council.
Is there a second? Can we have a parliamentary discussion? Is there any way for us to have a discussion without naming a specific person?
I remember I should have a discussion.
You can talk about anybody within the course of that motion.
All right, well, hearing no second, I will take another motion.
I would like to make a motion to discuss the five candidates that have applied to seek a Borough Council.
I would second that motion.
Okay. All in favor?
I would.
Okay. Now we can have a discussion of anything we want.
Okay. So we have five excellent candidates that each bring a different skill set. And how I'm beginning to think of this is that three out of the five currently have formal volunteer experience or sit on committees in the borough that they have a period of being on a committee or a board. So that is one way I'm thinking it now, and those positions down. And to your question, Bob, is that the two applicants that are not formally involved right now, are there ways that we can engage them so that council is not the first kind of seated at that table? So in other words, Mike and Brendan, who are not again on any boards or commissions, I would suggest giving them that we have five really qualified candidates, that we look at those with a record of enthusiasm currently for the council, and that we then see what avenues can we utilize, both Mike and Brendan, in formal roles.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
May I have permission to speak to the candidates, to address the candidates?
Just address the room.
I'm going to address the room, but I'm speaking, I might intended audience or the five people who interviewed with us. I'm taking this opportunity, and I will keep it under three minutes.
Thank you.
I'm really, this is an extraordinary group of candidates. Mike Antar has dedicated to public safety, serves on the volunteer fire department, would make an extraordinary contribution to the council with his, with the experience he would bring. Ira Winston has an unbelievable resume of experience with project management and all kinds of things that I don't even know what they are. Amazing, amazing competence in managing really, really big, big projects. And the borough would be extraordinarily well-served by him, particularly at this time. Fred Bush brings clearly a history with a capacity to like analyze data and, and, and think through questions in kind of a unique and sort of data-driven way. Holly Von Farrell has this commitment to collaboration and learning and how, and how to build consensus among like sort of diverse groups of people and prioritize interests. Brendan has, you know, kind of a rare and unusual resume for someone coming to seek a council appointment with, as an executive for a really, in a really large company, with clearly with tremendous amount of heart and ability to communicate and engage and think on his feet and all these kinds of skills that this council would benefit from. It's almost like, you know, we've got five council members here in the room with us. You know, if we could have an 11-member council, that would be, that would be really, the borough would be well-served. But we don't decide how large our council is, so we have a terrible decision to make. And there really, you know, there really are only two pathways to becoming a council member. You're elected or you can be appointed. And half of our current group here were initially served by appointment, and some of them later were elected. And the interviews we did tonight and all the appointments is, this kind of appointment process is relatively commonplace. It comes around pretty frequently that someone will resign from council, and there will be an appointment. For example, this is Holly's second time interviewing here in front of the council. And also.
Ira's.
Ira's second time. Yes, so there you go. It's that common. The election, the election path, on the other hand, requires you be subjected to greater public scrutiny, sometimes judgment and attacks. And the person we appoint tonight will be up for election in 18 months, and we have our 2021 primary. And participation in the public vote requires that a council member win the primary and the general election, so there are two elections that are involved. And it isn't casual. Running for office requires a major public declaration and a petition. You'll face a regional candidate selection process, take part in an endorsement contest, make public appearances, knock on doors, be exposed to criticism. It can also cost you money. Mona Alshaks, who's currently here in the room, who's currently running with Rob and I, can tell you that the effort involves filing paperwork from ballot petitions to mandated campaign finance reports. And as candidates, we seek to help with the political cohesion of the broader community too. Being a council member isn't always just about Norbert. There's also a kind of wider political organization that we're associated with. 80% of the bridge is being paid for by the federal government, 20% of the, or 15% of the bridge is being paid for by the Commonwealth. So we offer support to other candidates, including school, school board officials, county officers, and judges off the ballot that we share. And for the honor of serving a small community like ours, even in an uncontested race, and Mona and Rob and I are in an uncontested race, even in an uncontested race, the election process is still not really a walk-on. It requires a tremendous kind of discipline and effort to do it. Most everyone here has done this, Rob's engaged in doing it. Everyone who applied tonight have a sincere commitment to service, and I spoke to that. You have the credentials. I hope eventually all of you will be on the Borough Council and be a Borough Council member. And unfortunately, we, we have to choose one. There's several good reasons to justify a choice for each of you. I named some of them, but I feel bound to a specific reasons that I can sleep with, and that's, and I've been agonizing about this for a while, and tonight didn't make it any easier. I decided to favor in this moment the person who was our political rival this past spring. Fred filed an election petition with the county. He interviewed with the Lower Marion and Norbert Democratic Committee. He participated in the public, region-wide public forum, along with Lower Marion Commissioners and Norbert candidates, many of whom are on the ballot this November. And for this reason, I offer Fred my support at this moment, not saying I wouldn't offer each of you my support for another, at another moment. This is just how I can think about it. I respect each of you greatly, and I would have no hesitation supporting all of you in an election competition if another spot opens up, were to open up on council. So everyone at this table, I think, recognizes that it's an important honor to serve Norbert in this role, and it's a privileged responsibility, and I'm sure, I hope that each of you will do it someday, if not, if not tonight.
All right, thank you, Bob. Other council members, thoughts, comments, discussion?
This is a very difficult decision. It's the first time I've been part of a decision like this. I'm now on the other side, and I can see how very difficult this is. I remember it was difficult to interview, and now it feels even harder to be on this side because, because I can see the talent. I just want to echo Bob's comment that I would be privileged to serve with all five of the candidates that have come forward. And I just think it's a testament to the, the ethic of, of service and a kind of just think it's a testament to the, the ethic of, of service and a kind of interest in societal questions that we really get to cultivate in the small, in the small democracy. So thank you all.
Anything, anyone else? Michelle?
I don't want to take a lot of time, or, you know, I just want to echo what you said. I mean, we have, we're so blessed to have like five people put their names forward who are so, who are so committed to this community and bring such great qualities to the table. I came into this with a totally open mind, and I have to say, up to five years, I kind of still have one, which is not good because I have to make, you have to make a decision. But I think if I had to really think, my, my thinking is much less, much, 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 much narrower than yours, Bob. It's much more self-interested. I would like the person who comes up and sits at this table to be a person who has basically the lowest learning curve, because we have a lot of business. And it's sort of, so for me, it's about who's ready to come up to this table and immediately be like, oh yeah, this motion. I've been following really closely. I go to meetings. I know, I know what's on. I'm ready to contribute. I'm ready to ask a substantive question. I'm ready to form something out. Like that, to me, is probably the most critical thing. So I'm looking, I'm sort of like with Cindy, like I think the people that have sort of been showing up and being the most involved, like given that we have five quality candidates, that for me is, that's, that's like the decider. Like, come sit right here next to me. Lucky you. And start working.
Gigi, you have some thoughts?
It's interesting. You know, we're lucky that so many people did put their name, and you're absolutely right about that. And, and each one of them having unique qualities that would serve this council very well. I think that for me, there's only two. And obviously, I said the name of the one that I most support, and there's one other. It's interesting that you would say that, because girl, when I went to your house to ask you to join us in this room, there wasn't a motion idea you didn't know. I like that, that, that being here kind of puts you in a different perspective. So I like that. But I think it's sort of unfair to say the person who has to, who's sitting there, what you want, is ready, willing, and able to, I mean, there is a learning curve. There is. You had one, I had one, we all had one when we joined this room. So it does take some amount of time. But I think, I think, for me, there's only two candidates in this list.
Everyone has spoken except for myself. So we are lucky. We won't restate what I already did. I would also support Ms. Bon Ferrell as my choice. She has served well in multiple roles to date within sort of Borough Government, shown an ability to get detail work done in the emergency management plan, as well as very high-level work, which is the establishment of the Human Relations Commission. How are they going to be working together, sort of very open-ended, and yet be able to wrangle a group of people and help them move together towards a result. And specifically, when I asked a question about the small borough, and how do we prioritize resources, the word triage, just sort of professionally, in my own job, it's something I do every day, because the list of things to get done is always longer than the available resources and time. And I think personally, sitting in here at the council presidency, that is what challenges this council the most, is effective triage of issues and prioritization. So I was very pleased. I learned new things about each individual, but I think based on the notes I've taken, that is where I would like to lay my support. So any other comments? And then we'll move to close the discussion. Go ahead.
I was going to make a motion.
Okay. So do we need to do anything to close it? If we can just agree, the discussion is closed?
Yes.
Thank you.
We can do that.
Gigi, would you like to make a motion? You were jumping right in.
Thank you. I, I would like to make a question, appoint Holly Bon Ferrell to the available position here, Narberth Borough Council.
Is there a second? Okay. Hearing none?
Is that a second?
No, I, I'd like to make a motion.
I can't make a second. Okay.
There's no second.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Fred Bush to the open seat in Borough Council.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. We've had a discussion. All in favor? Do we have to? I don't know that we have to do a roll call. Are you voting?
Yeah.
All right. We'll do a roll call. Sorry, I missed you.
No, I said...
So we can call the vote again. Just call.
Just call.
All right. All in favor of appointing Mr. Bush to Narberth Borough Council, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Opposed.
So six to two, or four to two. Congratulations, Mr. Bush. Where is he? Congratulations. And I would like to congratulate council, because this is the first time in the 10 years I have served that the individuals here at this table have been able to comfortably, semi-comfortably, discuss these matters openly and in public in front of everybody. And that is a really positive step forward for our professional development. It really is. So Mr. Bush, if you could step forward, and the mayor will deliver you the oath of office.
I place your left hand on the bottom and raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this common law...
And the Constitution of this common law.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Mr. Bush, you have a second. Ms. Panopoulos has taken the opportunity to move up.
You can break next to the camera.
So Mr. Bush, now you are a full council member. We can continue with the meeting, and you can participate in all votes with all rights and privileges. I will take a motion from Finance and Administration to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
I move the Borough Council to approve the minutes of the August 14th, 2018, as the new Borough Council.
Let's second it. Any discussion?
Wait, are we? I'm sorry.
Thank you all.
You have to...
It was seconded by...
Me.
Second.
I can sign this, do that, and then second?
No, Rob. Give it to...
Sorry.
It's a paper. It needs a script.
Okay. See, I move the Borough Council to approve the scheduled bills, general sewage, solid waste funds, and authorized Borough Manager to pay all bills.
Is there, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Wait, scheduled bills?
That was scheduled bills.
That was, that was the wrong motion.
Too many people talking.
Yeah.
Did we approve the minutes? We did not?
Yeah.
No.
Take it all back.
Okay, let's start over.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion made.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion passed. Now, schedule bills.
Schedule bills. I move the Borough Council to approve the scheduled bills, general sewage, solid waste funds, and authorized Borough Manager to pay bills.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Let's get to D. This is a, this one, you had some changes.
Okay. So we were set to make four appointments. One for the Environmental Advisory Committee, but we discussed having the EAC interview applicants because they have a really specific skill set. And then they will recommend an applicant for us to appoint. So we're going to recommend building off on that EAC.
So could I just get a motion to, to defer to the EAC for a recommendation?
Yeah.
Right? So that we're sort of taking official action as council?
That's good.
Once it's on the table?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Or unless it's a point of information, just straight up.
Motion to table. Does motion to table the...
Well, it's not on the table yet.
No, 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 no.
So move, so move, move for the motion to...
The motion on the table.
Right.
Go ahead.
I move the Borough Council to point to following Narberth residents to serve as volunteers on the following boards and commissions. EAC, through UCC, Board for Public Health Position.
Thank you. Okay. Second? Can I get a second so we can make an amendment? All right. Would you like to amend the motion?
Yes. I would like to amend the motion, make a motion to defer to the C, to the EAC's application process and recommendation to the council for the appointment. I would also like to amend the motion and ask that we revisit this next week after two more applications are submitted.
Okay. So what I'm, what I'm, I would love if you, procedurally, here's how I'd like to deal with this. Take a motion to table, take this off the table. Make a motion that we ask the EAC to interview candidates and come to us with a recommendation. And then for the UCC position, we just don't do anything, and we deal with it in two weeks.
Okay.
So, so you moved to table.
I moved to table.
Second. All in favor of tabling? Thank you. It's tabled. Okay. You're following me here.
Do I have a second here?
Yes, please.
A second.
Can I ask a question about the EAC?
Yes, please.
Is that, is that how it's done? Because I know, I know...
It can be. I mean, really, as long as council is the one that's making...
Yeah.
However, council wants to come to that conclusion, they can. So if they want to defer that to the board, to the...
Okay. Thank you. Well, what happened?
I think for the UCC, I'm going to be working with the Borough Office to actually maybe put that in the form of a resolution, because we need to come up with the terms for that, for the next one.
Okay.
Good.
So we're good.
All right. So we will review that as well.
Okay.
Okay. Are we ready for E?
No, do we need to review that?
We need to approve it. So you say, make a motion for EAC to...
Make a motion for EAC...
To come to us with a candidate.
Come to us with a candidate.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. All in, can I have a discussion? No. All in favor? Aye. Okay. EAC will come to us with a candidate. UCC is tabled. Next.
Perfect. Motion E. I move the Borough Council, Resolution 2019-22, Sketch Plan, Land Development Plan, 650 Montgomery Avenue, per the attachment.
Can I just ask a question?
Get a second.
I'll second.
Okay. Seconded. It's on the table.
My question is, did we, did we skip over item C?
No, we didn't.
No, we didn't.
We approved the bills.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
We did. Quickly, and, you know.
It happened so fast. Thank you.
You can make a motion to take it back, Lee. Don't do that. Any discussion about 650 Montgomery Avenue?
I would like...
Mr. Metrick, could you give us just an information? We went to this, the applicant went to the zoning hearing board yesterday?
Yeah, the hearing was yesterday.
And what was the result of the hearing?
The, I can take that. The special exception in zoning relief was approved with conditions. Prior to the hearing, as I was directed by council, I wrote a letter. There's a zoning hearing board solicitor, Mr. Wentz, with the four conditions that we discussed at the last meeting. I'm happy to go through those four conditions. Again, it was slightly amended by the zoning hearing board. I read those now amended, so what they would be.
Yes, please.
First one was not amended, and that was that the applicant shall take reasonable measures to preserve and maintain the two existing mature trees within the existing verge along Montgomery Avenue, and shall consult with Narberth Shade Tree Commission implement any recommendations of the commission, etc., preservation and maintenance designed to enhance the continued survival of those trees. Second condition is that at any time if both or either tree located within the existing verge along Montgomery Avenue shall die, is removed or needs to be removed for any reason, the applicant shall replace such trees with new trees in the same location as the trees to be removed, with the same species and location of the trees to be determined by the Narberth Shade Tree Commission. The location language was added by the zoning hearing board.
Okay.
Third, that the final streetscape wall and landscaping treatments located along Montgomery Avenue and Meeting House Lane, included to the wall finish materials, shall be in substantial conformance with the applicant's renderings provided to the Narberth Planning Commission and Borough Council at their respective August 2019 meetings, unless alternative designs are approved by council during the land development process. Tree species to be installed at such locations shall be reviewed and approved by the Narberth Shade Tree Commission. There's also a condition, the council also review the sidewalk for safety, pedestrian safety concerns as well, which would be done through our engineer and through our, our safety, maybe our traffic engineer. So that is something that would also be reviewed at the time of land development process. So that was added, the review for the sidewalk safety. Do you have a question with that, Bob?
Yes. So does that have to happen before tonight's vote?
Does.
Would that review by our Borough Engineer need to happen prior to our vote?
No, I read that as during the land development process, as this whole, this whole condition regards the council review during the land development process.
So we'll have another opportunity to discuss this with our Borough Engineer if, if, if they have concerns?
Yes. So it would have to be in time. They'd have more, assuming we move forward through the planning process, there would be additional more detailed plans for review.
Good. I just wanted to make sure we checked that box.
Yes. And then fourth, that the applicant shall consult with the Borough Engineer and Narberth Planning Commission regarding alternative placements and widths of the sidewalk, sidewalk along Montgomery Avenue. That's what it was. There was provision originally regarding the possibility of a verge along Meeting House Lane. That was struck by the zoning hearing board. So that was a condition being proposed. And applicant, and that kind relates to three, both regarding the placement widths of sidewalk and the safety related to this as well. So those would be the conditions that relief was granted. So it would be a condition of our land development approval that they comply with those conditions as well, along with all the review letters from the Borough staff. Again, this is just a sketch plan approval. After a tentative sketch plan, there would follow a more detailed plan, if a preliminary plan, based upon conversations, what I've heard from council, there would be a condition at that point in time, they submit to the Shade Tree Commission for review. So the final plan would be in line. That would be at this time. There are no waivers requested with this plan. Again, they, they received the relief from the zoning hearing board, but there's no waivers from our subdivision land development ordinance or our order ordinances. Haven't answered any questions, but any other conditions that are imposed would be continually to be imposed. Again, trying to get it in a good place or when that final plan, if they make it that far, is reported, the Borough is protected.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? Questions from council members? All in favor of approving Resolution 2019-22, the sketch plan for 650 Montgomery Avenue, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. It's unanimous. Thank you. And, you know, I would also like to comment on this. This was an example of council really engaging on a more complex process of delegation and trusting the people we've put in place in various boards and commissions. And I think that's a real win for us. So, and congratulations to the developer for working with us. I really appreciate your flexibility in addressing our concerns.
Thank you. We look forward to your view of the progress and the rest of the process.
Thank you. All right. I'll take eight F. How do you want to handle a eight F?
So I have the motion here.
Okay.
I move it. I'm moved that the Borough Council authorized the Borough Manager to advertise, distribute the bid for waste and recycling collection and disposal.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yes. I think, I just wanted to ask if we could hear the, a presentation of the plan for the RFP that would be sent, you know, that would go out to vendors.
And in what ways it's materially different than maybe what we sent out before?
Yeah, if we could set the high...
Yeah, I think that, that's a good thing. Matt West is prepared to talk to you this evening a little bit about what went into the thinking, the process, how we got to where we're at, and why the bid contains the things that it does contain. So we will help you understand what are the parameters of it. So I'm going to defer the answer to the man in the back row. Matt?
Yeah, thank you. I had a brief 30-minute presentation.
Kidding. It's only 25 minutes. Kidding again. You know, first things I would like to say is that the time, energy, thought process that I put into this bid process is looking at the past three years' worth of how we interact with trash. We've learned a lot, and I wanted to incorporate that into this new bid process. And the genesis of that is to maintain the current trash service that we have and include an increase in level of service. So that's what this bid process reflects. The thing that you're doing tonight is approving us, the office, to advertise this bid. We are not approving this bid tonight. We are not looking at any, any of the details about what the costs are. This is just what the bid will be for public consumption. Once I get that green light, we can then distribute it to potential trash haulers, and then we can start looking at the bid responses. then we can start looking at the bid responses and tabulate that in more specifics for you to make that decision, so we can have trash service starting January 1. What does that mean? Things that are staying the same. We are still having a single trash hauler, it will still be a three-year contract, it will be the same universe of collective properties as you know it now. It will be once-a-week trash pickup, once-a-week recycling. We will also have fall leaf collection, Christmas tree collection, and reporting requirements. All trash haulers are to report all of their hauling to us, so we can forward that to DEP for a grant application. I'd like to next focus on some improvements. First is improvements of level of service. I have incorporated into this bid a once-a-week brush and yard waste. Currently, we have once a month. That is a point of much consternation in the borough. Once a month is just not enough. Once a week should be good. Another point of contention in the borough is bulk pickup. Currently, the public works staff does a monthly public works-generated bulk pickup. We work it out, we absorb the cost through charging the fees through the residents, they pay us, we pick it up, we dispose of it. It takes up a pretty big chunk of public works' time. So I'm including in this bid a once-a-week bulk pickup, one item per residence per week. As an ad alternate, I'm also asking them to provide the cost of an additional bulk pickup per week. I want them to tell us what that cost would be. Some other improvements on the management side, we are requiring an assigned contract manager, provided to us by the contractor. Right now, we don't have that, it's been a challenge to get good answers. We're always often in the middle of a resident complaint, trying to get the right person at our current trash hauler to be responsive. So we want a dedicated contract manager. And the other big improvement on the management side have to do with penalties. We've seen some things over the past three years, mixing, recycling and trash, those sorts of things. And so there's a, if you look at your bid document that I forwarded to you, I'm not going to go over all of them, things like missed collections, failure to report, or intentionally mixing recyclables with refuse, and I have $1,000 per occurrence, $50 per unit, per missed day, so on and so forth. Those are the key changes. Everything else is a whole bunch of legal gobbledygook that is in there that is, don't need to go over in a public meeting, but those are the key differences. Any questions?
So, just so I understand how this works, so say, say we ask these haulers to bid on the once-a-week brush and the once-a-week bulk, and then, but we can choose, if it's too expensive, like we could choose to kind of lop off that option, or how does it work? Are we, what flexibility do we have?
No, that is only if you do the ad alternates, so there's four different ad alternates. And so I believe that these are the core services that residents in Narberth need. I've looked at other municipalities, and this is not anything uncommon. This is actually a contract that was just bid and awarded, it's the same thing, in a municipality, a similar size in Bucks County, they're doing the same thing. So it's not out of the, I'm not asking for, you know, the sky, I do believe it's attainable. Yep.
Thank you. One piece of critique that we heard from many businesses and some citizens when we changed to the most recent contract three years ago, was that Monday for pickup can be difficult, many businesses are closed Sunday or Monday, and so they sort of have to come into work just to take out the trash. And also residents who go away for weekends commonly, a middle week pickup Tuesday, Tuesday went, they seemed more convenient for them. Is that something that you feel we could specify in the contract that was in my notes from sort of the next time this came up? Or do you feel like that would sort of constrain the bidding process too much?
Good question, and thanks for bringing that up. I do have language in the bid restricting or eliminating Saturday pickups. We had that this past three years, and it just doesn't work because we don't have any full-time staff on duty, and it's just really, it's a challenge for us to address that. So I do have that in the bid to have no weekend unless there's a snowstorm on, you know, if we schedule it on Friday, sometimes it will happen on a Saturday, right? I did not put in Mondays, I share that sentiment, I've heard that also. I would prefer not to have it on Mondays, but I don't want to have a bid that would be restrictive, and hopefully that would come in to final negotiations of selecting those days and discussing that with the trash hauler. I just didn't think it was appropriate to put it in a bid document to be...
When the haul returns their bid, they do not return the days of the week they'll be working.
That's negotiated.
That's answers.
Correct.
All right, it's on the radar. Fred?
So, when I moved here from San Antonio, we had an organics pickup that was part of our, you know, weekly routine, and I realize, you know, you're far along in this process, and we're on a deadline for adopting something in January, but is this something that could be at least priced, or something that could be on the table? Is it, is that a possibility to look into a borough-wide organics pickup for yard, not just yard waste, but mostly this was food waste that was being picked up?
Yeah, I'm not sure about whether organics is under current large trash haulers. My understanding is that that would be a separate contractor, so that would be another contract that we would have to put out. If that's something that council's interested in, that is your decision to make, I would separate that from your weekly trash and use, my personal recommendation is to have an additional contract with a separate contractor just for organics. If the Borough, if Borough Council chooses to go down that...
Mr. Walco, nothing in the trash contract would prevent us from bringing on a second hauler to handle that waste stream. They wouldn't say, you're sort of taking out of my way, it's my waste stream, you know, it's my...
I doubt they would want to take that.
If I want to know.
I'd have to see what the definition of trash and waste would be if it was covered in the bid docs. We could exclude that specifically, but that may not be the best reason, because then they won't pick that up, they'll put it out in the trash. I, it's mine, I have the same understanding that you have, that that isn't a service that trash haulers would offer. So it would be something that I would think they would be in a position to bid on, and as a result of that, it would be a separate contract, much like if we needed some pickup grease, you know, it's not something that they do, grease haulers. So, again, that's something that isn't precluded from this agreement.
Also, point of information, Mr. Bush, I remember when we negotiated the last contract, there was a question about composting. We were told at that time, there was no organized facility in the Philadelphia area that was composting organic waste sort of in bulk. So there was nowhere to sort of take it, but I don't know, three years later, the map could have changed significantly so we could, you know, research that.
There's a small-scale facility in media, Kitchen Compost.
I think it's a separate issue, so we can address it anytime.
I have one quick question. Matt, I love that you wrote in the penalties, because that has been such an issue. Is that going to preclude us from attractive bidders offers? Is that kind of standard?
Right, so that's a good, good point to bring up. The most recent bid incorporates comments from our solicitor, Mr. Walco, he addressed those sorts of things to make, he added a couple words in there, like intentionally, so we worked it in such a way that won't be exclusive. The other thing that I did want to also bring up is that one of the, I'm liking this idea of these alternate bids, is for the contractor to provide 96-gallon containers to each location. That's doable, it really is. Recycling and a trash, at least one trash, maybe two, have that as an ad alternate, I think we can also get that in a cost-effective manner to provide that. So there's consistency, everybody has the same look, same working lids, everything, right? It would just look a lot nicer. I think the town deserves it. Any other questions?
All right. All in favor of approving the motion to advertise a bid? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Mr. West, thank you very much. It's the most comprehensive look at these services I've seen in the past probably 15 years that I've been paying attention.
Yeah, ever.
Possibly ever, but I can't, I can't speak that. 8G, infrastructure. Mr. West, board.
Okay, so this is, this is the Menouni Resolution, okay. So I move the Borough Council through a no-cost time extension to Menouni Associates for Engineering Agreement Number 069438, North Montgomery Avenue Bridge until January 30th, 2022.
Until when, I'm sorry, can you say that again?
January 30th, 2022. The current contract agreement expires on March 28th, 2019, and by extending this, we continue to qualify for the reimbursement for the federal and Commonwealth programs. Greg, Mr. Metrick?
Can I get a second?
Second.
I said the second by Mr. Bush. Mr. Metrick, could you give us some, anything new?
Well, this is paperwork, this is bureaucratic paperwork to keep the engineering agreement live and going through the end of construction services, and we added on an extra six months to the timeframe just to be sure that we don't have to do this again. So this covers the time period in which final design will be completed and construction will be completed. This expired in March, it would kind of fall under the radars of both the project manager and the borough, and we are playing catch-up to make sure that our agreement remains live and active, and we don't run into any problems when we submit for reimbursement for our engineering costs.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, unanimous. Back to you, Councilmember.
I move the Borough Council Resolution 2019-23, final subdivision plan 308, as not per the attachment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I think we reviewed this at a previous meeting, is there anyone who needs more discussion or questions? All in favor? Aye. Bob?
I voted aye.
Unanimous? Unanimous, thank you. All right, moving on to 9A, Mr. Manager, your report.
Thank you. The report's included in the meeting package posted online, it's just a primer for everyone in terms of our schedule to develop the 2020 operating budget for the borough. That process has begun at the staff level, we're meeting in workshop sessions, myself and assistant manager, we're meeting with the Director of Public Works, we have met with him, meeting with the Chief of Police next week. It's a great opportunity this year to compile these budgets with leaders in those departments that now have a year, year-plus under each of their collective experience here at the borough. So we are going to be really looking at making better decisions and increasing operational efficiency and service quality through the intelligence observations of Chief John Gallagher and Director Ed Harmon. So, better people, time, experience leads to better decision-making, so I'm very happy about that. We have plenty of opportunities outlined in my manager's report for public meetings as mileposts along the way between here and adoption. Adoption is scheduled to take place December 18th, business meeting, which is the last business meeting of council in the year, and we are statutorily required to adopt a budget, and that's our last meeting that we have advertised. So working back from the 18th, we'll have to publish a draft budget on the November 6th workshop meeting to the public, so we have all of the intervening workshop and committee meetings for public comment. We also are going to target October 16 business meeting for the draft budget to be circulated internally amongst members of council. That does not give us a full cycle of committee meetings or council meetings to discuss, the only lucky one there is infrastructure. So I will ask, once we get that in your hands, to bring your concerns to me directly, email, phone call, meet with me in person, meet with me in groups, as long as it's not more than three of you. We can sit down and talk, talk budget as much as you'd like. I'm clearing out my schedule for those two and a half weeks between the 16th and the 6th to connect the dots for everyone, anyone who has concerns or questions. So I just want everyone to get in a budget frame of mind over the next couple of months. It's our big push towards the end of the year, it's what we dedicate a lot of our time to in the office, and it operationalizes, is that a word?
It is now.
All of the policy and recommendations that council adopts and put in place, it's really the single most important thing we do on a yearly basis.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for the manager?
This is not the capital plan, Matt, this is the actual working budget.
It's the operating budget, so it pays salaries, maintenance costs, John's bills, Eric's bills, all our other partner consultants, yes.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you. All right, Mr. Solicitor?
I'm going to request an executive session to talk about a financial litigation matter after the meeting. In addition to working with staff on matters that come for the borough, I just want to make sure council is aware that I have been working with the Narberth Human Relations Commission recently, who have presented, and I've been working through their rules and regulations. As you may remember, we passed a anti-discrimination ordinance a few years back that created a Human Relations Commission. And in order to have that body take form, there needs to be rules and regulations as to how they operate. That commission is now staffed, and they are, they have worked through the rules, I'm guiding them through that process. So hopefully those rules will be for council in future meeting, for formal adoption by council. In addition to that, something that council should be thinking of in the future is that the way that the ordinance was drafted provides the Human Relations Commission with the ability to mediate claims of discrimination within the borough. However, it does not provide them with the opportunity to further investigate and further dispose of those claims through the public hearing process unless council votes to provide them with that power to have these, what's called in the ordinance, expanded procedures. So if they decide that they would like to have those expanded procedures, they're going to be making that request to council to give them that ability. That would need to be done before there are any complaints made, and it can't be on complaint-by-complaint basis. So, nothing that you need to do right now, but it's just something to think about as I think over the next year or so, as something that's going to be coming for you, that there are probably going to be requests that you can...
Okay, well, we'll be ready for that.
I would like to take one.
Monthly reports have been submitted. I have a number of under new and old business, but any comments for the good of council?
I have one, in addition to what Mr. Ridgeway gave us earlier. There's a beef and beer for the teacher, Michelle Florian, on October 13th at the Belmont Hills Fire Department. She's been battling cancer for a number of years in Belmont Hills. North Narberth kids go to Belmont Hills Elementary School, go to public school, and Ms. Florian's a third-grade teacher there, so she needs our support, and October 13th at the Belmont Hills Firehouse.
Okay, thank you. Write that down.
Thank you.
All right, anything under new business?
So, at our last meeting, I discovered, because I canceled the FNA meeting, which was my bad, but I discovered that prior to that, that there were two item lines, particularly for Save On Park, one, $6,200 for the parking lot, almost $10,000 for playground, for park improvements, that had not come through FNA, public safety, or infrastructure. So I asked at the last meeting, where did those item lines come from, where was the request made? At the time, Borough Manager didn't know the answer, and followed up with me the next day, forwarded an email from Mr. Nixon on July 18th, personally asking for that request. I think procedurally, it's important for us to all understand that we did agree that we would be going through committees, and it's individuals that solicit through Borough Manager for personal requests, rather, we respect the fact that there is a process and a procedure.
I fully support that.
Okay. So with that said, now upon reflection, FNA discussed it at our meeting prior to this, and we would like to have a discussion about reallocating that $62,000 that we, that are assigned in the CIP to Save On. Those funds do not meet the criteria of safety or ADA issues, so we'd like to have a discussion about that, and to talk about where we could possibly reallocate those funds.
All right, discussion. Thoughts? Fred?
I think at FNA, just to clarify, I think we said we wanted to bring the issue of, perhaps a result of whether or not we would want to reallocate those funds, but not what we would reallocate.
Correct.
Meaning because we don't... Meaning because we don't need.
That would be great, because otherwise we'll be here.
And the reason to bring that down.
Discussion I also was to provide additional guidance to the office, so that if we did want to reallocate, we would not do it at a best time and then get into contracts.
Great.
We discussed this in REC Board, similar issue, and I think the members there would very much like to have a dedicated annual revenue stream for both of the parks, or budget item, for both of the parks, just to cover, you know, any projects, any small, relatively small projects they may have in mind. You know, if every single item has to be debated every year, it becomes a little more difficult than if we say, well, we need to support our parks, we're going to set aside this amount of money every year for park improvements. Now, I know that, you know, we've talked about the changes to the property, and I think if you wanted to say, well, we're going to provide this on the condition that it be affordable, or on the condition that it be easy, you know, something that will be useful no matter what the configuration of the park is in the future, you know, I think people could work with that. But I think it's important to have funds there for the, for the parks every year. And the purpose of the capital plan is to set aside money for, you know, specific designated purchases every year, and I think the parks are a reasonable category to have that. Whether the, you know, $62,000 is the right number, or whether $10,000 would be the right number, that's a bigger question, right? There should be some money in there for the parks.
I just want to say, like, I agree, here with the reallocation, the discussion of reallocation, and think that to make it available for the parks makes sense. They could just have a kind of a fine point question. It's like, it seems to me that we need to really charge our borough management team, our Borough Management, Director of Public Works, the team, with how they would recommend we allocate those funds as, rather than saying that these are funds available to the REC Board, that they would be thinking about how to allocate. So it's just a, it's just a question about, you know, how do we want that really to work? And, and I, and I think we need to be very explicit about how that, how budget items actually work, and that, you know, and I guess I should say my opinion. I tend to think that we should trust our manager, management team with the allocation of those budget items, rather than say, one of the, one of the, a board or commission, any board or commission, because other boards and commissions may say, well, we'd like to determine how these, how these funds are allocated. So do you see what I'm pointing to?
I absolutely do. And just for information, you know, the REC Board traditionally met once per year, and I would say, you know, didn't have a lot of action items when they met. We had a real lack of leadership, we felt, in terms of our parks, and so we asked the REC Board to sort of wake up, right, and to meet on a very regular basis, and to have agenda items. And simultaneously, we also built out our professional staff in our Public Works Department. And I think that we sort of got, we sort of played an A plan and a B plan, and we got both. And I think it might make sense for council to have a discussion of, you know, what are we charging the REC Board to do moving forward? And Fred, you and I, we've discussed this, given that now, you know, take it back 18 months, where the REC Board spent its time looking online to find the best lock for the gate in Candy Cane Park as a, as a large group of people, to now where they can think more strategically. And then also, how does it connect with our budgeting process? Should we, as a council, sort of be, and I'll use the word, hopefully not pejoratively, but sort of micromanaging down to the $10,000 level of exactly where those dollars go? Or, to your point, a larger bucket that the professional staff can apply where it is needed as they see fit? That sort of mirroring some of it back to you?
Yes, similar is my concern, and I'm in favor of that larger budget that the management staff will give out.
So I think maybe that the best place for that larger conversation is to come through your committee in infrastructure.
I'm not sure we have a role in budgeting. In fact, can I just get a clarification about that? Mr. Metric?
Well, it wouldn't be so much about the budgeting.
You indicated that we were not, didn't have a role in that, but I'm fine for us to have that discussion there.
I think it's sort of like, infrastructure needs to look at it operationally. Does it work to have it done sort of as a, here's a bucket and go figure it out? Finance and administration is the one who's going to ultimately make the decision, but in finance and administration, they're really looking at dollars.
You're going to make the recommendation, council makes the final decision.
Well, council makes the final decision. But the idea being, does it work operationally? That's where the infrastructure committee works with Public Works and the REC Board to sort of find out if this makes sense. The dollars and cents is sort of the separate piece.
So, you know, if the other committee members agree, like I would ask, then the managers explain to us how they think, you know, what they think would work best, and we can think on that as a committee. We agree or not, you know?
So for topics for the next meeting, but then I'm going to get back to sort of the.
So let's put that on that agenda then, thank you.
Great. I think that's going to address a lot of high-level issues. Now, getting back to, should we consider reallocating these funds? Now that we sort of, we know where we are, where we're going.
And, and not to anything that we're identifying.
I'm in favor, I'm in favor of that. I think we need to keep the nominal $10,000 in the Savion Avenue Park Fund, you know, because that's, we need to have money there for maintenance upkeep. I mean, I believe the management needs to have the money there to maintain the equipment and, and, and other stuff that's there. I think that the most controversial item was the, was the parking lot, because we don't know yet the disposition, you know, what's going to become of the parking lot. You know, is this a 25-year rebuild, or is it a five-year? We've had that discussion round and round.
And we knew what we sort of bid, and certainly the, exactly the parameters of what was approved, which was the minimum size of the actual used lot, and sort of the bare minimum to get us, you know, what was it, 10 years? Something like that, rather than a full dig out and rebuild.
We haven't seen a contract like that.
So here's the thing that I said, so what I said at FNA.
But that's what fits in the dollar amount.
Well, kind of eating away at me after we passed the CIP, because I started off our discussion with CIP just mentioning all the projects that we've worked and funded that we had planned to fund, because we had gotten kind of stuck with this $200,000 bill, basically, in, in total for the bridge, that we didn't expect, and that really took a bite out of our capital investment projects. So I was looking, and I listed some of the things we were going to do, which included approving one of the Belmont Avenue parking lot right next door, CO2, CO monitors for this building, and some other clearly important safety related issues that I would put on an equal footing with the Savion Avenue parking lot, in terms of their, their relationship to public safety and, and things like that. So when I looked at those things, I said, okay, well, these are fairly equally footed projects. Other things being equal, since we can't fund them all, why would we choose to fund the one where the, the future of the property is somewhat uncertain and in flux, and that parking lot may not be asked to serve more than five or 10 years, as opposed to choosing the one, the parking lot here, right outside this building, that I think we're pretty sure there's a lot of use, and it's going to be continued use for, for the long term? So that seemed like, like we sort of made a mistake in our thinking, and that's why I thought maybe we should revisit that.
All right, is there gender consensus that we should have a discussion? I'm seeing none.
And to Michelle's point is that, you know, it goes back to that triage conversation, right? So we have contractual obligations at 201 Savion regarding that parking lot. And while I understand that $200,000 might be way out of, you know, out of quack to have that parking lot done, I don't feel that the number that was presented was an exceptionally large amount, and then the discussion that followed regarding maybe limiting. I just, and as I said at the last meeting, being there frequently, I know how many households are there, and what's being used and what isn't, and the condition the lot is in. And so I, I would not recommend changing that dollar amount for the parking lot. Unless you're spending more.
To learn more about what Gigi just was explaining, do we need to go into an executive session to hear about those obligations? Because, because I'm, I'm just aware that, I'd like to hear more about that.
I mean, if we, if we.
During the discussion, we should go to executive.
Yeah, and I, and I just know that that's kind of part of the disconnect here for me.
Sure, I'll add it to our executive session, which we're already having.
But maybe prior to that, though.
Maybe we can agree at this time to just advise the office to just hold off on spending a lot of time on that until we, until we get this resolved.
I think they're getting the message loud and clear.
And just to have a discussion. We agree on that.
I want to go, particularly, we in infrastructure never got a number of $52,000. The only record of $52,000 is an email from Jim Nixon saying, Savion's important, please spend. It's a completely arbitrary number. It never came through committee.
Unless it's something that's going on, it would sound problematic.
There's going to be more discussion, including an executive session later this evening.
Oh, no, I don't know, it was just.
That was your desire.
Well, you're wrong. Okay.
Well, let's move on to the next meeting. Who else has new business?
I do, but it's probably not welcome now. Can I preview it?
I will be great.
I think contacted by, by some, some individuals who've been trying to organize block parties and have found the requirement for approval of 75% of households to be a bit humorous. And I think that we might want to just, as a council, see if we want.
I'd like to second the motion if that was a motion.
It was saying that this is maybe preventing people.
I have an, I have an idea, an offering.
Maybe we can resolve it for a second.
First of all, I don't know where the number came from, but in the, in the Senate, they can appoint a federal judge with a simple majority. In order to do a block party, you've got to have three quarters of the members, you know, to close the street.
I was getting three quarters of the members.
Maybe it should be a simple majority.
Maybe, maybe it doesn't seem too much.
Or at least maybe two-thirds, you know, like the.
I'm more in Michelle's camp. Usually there's a couple organizers, and there's a party.
Maybe it's to have to be percent.
Let me ask you a question for information. Have we had complaints from neighbors on blocks that they unhappy there was a block party on their street? Hearing none, I would suggest that, while I appreciate the spirit of the application, and that we need to formalize, maybe we could, we could really reduce those requirements. And also, I think that the office could take basically a general sense from council here, come back with something that is more streamlined.
Yeah, and can I also ask that in future, like, if certain, like, small things like this are kind of being created, that as a council, we're sort of, as representatives of the residents, that we're sort of consulted about them? Now, maybe we were, like, maybe, maybe this was sent out in an email or something, but I, but I want to suggest that in order for us to do that work effectively, it has to sort of be spoon-fed to us, like, we're doing this.
I'm actually going to, going to take the opposite position, just sort of share my thinking, which is, we need to empower the office to make decisions, to be able to do things, to run the borough. And exactly what happened here is sort of the correct thing.
Oh, that's the correction.
Thing came out, people didn't like it, we fixed it pretty quick. It's sort of the same way we were with our, with the parking permit scenario, right? Somebody have it, we fix it, and then the whole time, everyone moves on.
Well, I have another one, not to pile on, I have another one, but since we're fixing little things right now. I've heard from neighbors that the, the whole thing, the way the cones work, for, for, you know, for people who are moving or having construction done on their properties, doesn't work as well as it used to work. Have the sticks and signs at Say No Parking. There may be a legal reason that we only do cones now and not sticks and signs, but it was just kind of like, I think this longtime resident of more than 50 years felt like, gosh, it used to just be a thing, you'd get the sticks and the signs, and, and now you have to put a deposit and all of that. And I kind of saw her point of view, and I also understand the, you know, the need to, to, to manage it, and so I'm wondering if there's a middle way.
I think we need a suggestion box, because that's sort of where these things are, honestly.
Like a friendly suggestion box. It's not a big deal, but on the other hand, it does kind of impact the quality of play.
So, and, and the way I'm going to suggest we implement that is to send an email as a council member, or, you know, the committee, send it in to the Borough Office, suggest it. You label it as a suggestion. I think it sets a tone for the, you know, we've had issues where council members email, and it's very unclear to the office, do I need to drop everything I'm doing to make this happen? This is a suggestion.
Okay.
Right? Not in two years, but not tomorrow.
And did we have the consensus on your suggestion, your belief, like, on your posthagueal belief, that the office should be empowered to take care of these things? And then that we can then respond if there becomes a.
Mr. Metric as manager should implement administrative policies and procedures as sort of as.
Because you're one way on that, so that's good, okay.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other new business before I get to my long list?
I have a question. Is the, is the current setup of the, of North Norbert just, just, just past the bridge, is that considered in a finished state for now? Like with the crosswalk and the, the, you know, or are there more safety improvements on the horizon?
No, is the quick answer. No more changes or improvements to what's out there right now. I mean, it doesn't mean we wouldn't if we don't think things are warranted, and the process was iterative to arrive at this solution that we see out there today. Didn't come out of the box looking like that. We did make some changes to it in those first couple of weeks that we implemented it.
Because I know that some of the businesses there have said, I've always sweetened it a lot, and they, they've had some crash, minor accidents, of cars turning around, and the pedestrians and bikes still feel a little unsafe crossing up at the, right up at the lip of the bridge. So I think that is an issue that could be revisited at some point, but not right now, but it's still a concern for people out there.
Noted. I know, we've gotten some other emails, I mean, it's a suboptimal situation.
It's never optimal.
No. And it's less optimal now, but, but we're keeping it open. I mean, I think that, that's a decision council can make, but that was the last consensus.
I don't have a problem with that decision.
Yeah, no, I understand.
I'm hoping we can make it a little safer.
I think the sense from the traffic engineer after that last round of improvements was kind of like.
Yeah, this is as good as it gets till, yeah.
No, you were very concerned about that.
2040, we get a new bridge. I appreciate people's feedback and suggestions, but the energy is a traffic issue. We need to.
They're getting new bridge.
Yeah, exactly.
Anybody else? Okay, I'm going to throw into the suggestion box, which will eventually punt to one of the committees, a request for the basketball lights to be kept on later on certain evenings to encourage more play. I have a resignation letter from Michelle Condo from the planning commission, and I remarked that we had six members with Michelle, we go down to five. The last guidance I kind of felt from this table was that five was the number where we wanted to be, so I don't think we're advertising for appointment, and I don't think we're going to plan to change the ordinance either. We're just going to give ourselves some flexibility there. Okay, thank you. And Medicare for All, we dealt with. Are there any other open positions that we should be advertising? Have EAC, have appeal, UCC appeals.
Public Works is hiring a full-time crew person. I'm sending your application by Friday, October 11th.
So I'm just aware that we're coming up on a whole raft of expirations, board and commission expirations, and, you know, there's, there could be some significant attrition, we don't know.
We should be ahead of that.
So I think we should get ahead of it now by advertising all of those vacancies now, so that, in, so that we'll have, you know, by the end of this year, we'll have people, we'll have applicants.
Fantastic. Mr. Metric, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, and I have someone to delegate that to.
Fantastic. Be written.
I realize this meeting's gone really late.
I know, we're moving along here.
Since we're in this mode, it seems to me, like, I've actually been on a lot of council meetings, and this moment right here where we're kind of talking about little things is unusual. It's new, never quite done it quite this way. I've always ended the public that they had an opportunity for public comment, and that there wasn't sort of, you know, the council sort of didn't have like a little moment where we could talk about little things that concern us, and I think it's productive.
I'm glad to hear that.
And I wonder if we could have our own little suggestion box kind of moment in the agenda, at some point in the agenda. Maybe that's what new business really is supposed to be, but it's like little things that, you know, you don't really necessarily want to write a whole email to the Borough Manager or to all of council, because it just clutters up the email boxes. So I kind of rather like, I sort of just let these things go rather than address them, and I think maybe others may do the same thing. And it's kind of just an opportunity, everybody hears it. If, if I'm out of line, or, or like have a distortion about something, then I can look around the room, and people can say, you know, that was, it's not such a big deal. Or if I'm actually accurate by that, by something I observe, and five other council members say, oh, yeah, that's, that actually matters, then we can kind of move little things along and maybe improve the quality of the communication.
Well, I think over the past couple of months, we've sort of expanded new and old business into a sort of a more informal part, and I think let's continue with it and see if it, see if it's working. So, good, we can do it here. Last thing I have is, or two things, the netting in the field. We were looking at sort of possibly a November start date, which means we're, we're really going to make that happen with the contractor, we need to make a decision. We budgeted money, we had a goal for kind of a split of funds. There've been some changes on NIDA, but I still believe that NIDA supports, supporting that. I know we support it. We went to the REC Board and asked them. REC Board and asked them to work with NAA. Fred is the Chair of the REC Board, and maybe you can give us an update on where that stands.
So NAA wants to speak directly with council. At the time, I was like, so they basically did not want to speak to me about it. They wanted to speak to council, since they were being asked for money as to contribute. So they would like to sit down with council.
They knew where we were.
Are they going to reach out?
Well, I reached out to Melissa. I've not been able to get in touch with her. She's the Chair of NAA, and, but I just want to, now we have a new member up here. I would like to understand that I still have sort of the understanding correctly that we are looking for them to pick up about a third of the expense.
Okay, that wasn't super clear to me before when I was talking with Melissa. I didn't have an exact memory in mind, so I was just, well, so I think that led to some confusion, but she wants to sit down, so, I mean, I'm going to see her at REC Board tomorrow. Should I direct her to Finance Committee? Should I direct her to Infrastructure, to you, Aaron?
I'll talk to her. Mr. Harmon, what was the amount for the quote for the netting?
Most enough quote that I was able to receive is $45,000.
$45,000, so roughly, we're talking, I'll call it a $50,000 spend, because we could go back to them, and the prices can change over time, and we're looking for about a third of that support to come from the different groups. Okay. Thank you. Now I can move that forward, and thank you. All right, any old business? Hearing none, I will take a motion for adjournment, and we will go directly into executive session as soon as the room is cleared.
I should not adjourn.
Second, all in favor? Aye, thank you very much. Good night, everybody.